Good evening. I'll reconvene in an open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on October 5, 2024, beginning at 7:34 PM. I'd like to thank everyone for being with us tonight and for being, granting us some grace and patience as we work through a few things in closed. Our board meetings are open to the public, and we welcome everyone. Thank you for participating in public education. While our meetings are open to the public, this is a meeting, and we have business to conduct. Disruptions won't be permitted, and anyone who disrupts the meeting or speaks when others are speaking may be asked to leave or be escorted out by security attending the meeting. We welcome civic input, but we will remain respectful and civil. We'll start a meeting with the opening ceremony. Call on Ms. Foster.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to welcome Bentley Steele tonight, an outstanding sixth-grade student from Ashworth Elementary, to lead us in the pledges.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge of allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Mr. Steele. At this time, I'll ask that you silence your cell phones and electronic devices and join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda tonight is our open forum for agenda items. Do we have any registered speakers, Ms. Crossnow?
President Chapa, we do not.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the recognition portion of our program. Turn it over to, I believe, Dr. Hill.
Mr. Gillis leads that department in a remarkable way, and so tonight, we want to thank him and every member of our Transportation Department here on National School Bus Safety Week. Next, we also want to take this opportunity to recognize our Food, Nutrition, and Services Department. They do an outstanding job. Their hard work ensures that our students are well-fed and ready to learn. From preparing nutritious meals in the cafeterias to catering services, they play a crucial role in the fostering of healthy and supportive learning environment. This team, under the direction of Mr. David Lewis, and I believe he's in the House. If you'll please stand, Mr. Lewis. Thank you, sir. We would also like to give a special thanks to Chef Kuko, who works many overtime hours in catering, in the catering kitchen, and for our board and events like tonight to, again, provide those nutritious meals. So, again, we know that the school district is about what goes on in the classroom, but these two departments do an excellent job of supporting the efforts of the schools and the campuses, and so we wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate and recognize him. So, thank you.
I also want to point out real quickly, I got word earlier that Chef, you might have some family with you as well, and we wanted to make sure we recognize your family that's here as well. Thank you. Thank you to Jason and our Transportation Department. Thank you, Chef, for all the amazing work you all do for us. We appreciate you.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. I think folks don't understand the complexity of what those departments do. I often think about what it takes every day to make sure that our students get to and from school, get to all of their activities, all of the routes and the planning that goes into making our Transportation Department function. We occasionally hear about the one-offs that don't happen, but in the grand scheme of things, it's an incredible operation, and I'd say the same thing for our Food Services Department. We've got one of the best out there. I will always talk about how when we first shut down for COVID coming back in March of 2020, Arlington ISD, we announced that we weren't coming back, I believe, on a Friday. On a Monday morning, Mr. Lewis and his staff were serving breakfast at campuses all across the district, and that was when we might have been the first in the area to do that. And it was a real testament to the hard work of our staff in a time when I think folks figured out just how important student nutrition is to everyone in the community. We served, I believe, almost a million meals over the course of several months, and so appreciate all of the work that our Transportation and Food Service folks do. We'll move on now to administrative appointments. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, and President Chapa, it's my honor tonight to recommend ratification of candidate as discussed in closed session.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Trustees, do I have a motion to approve the ratification of the individual discussed in the executive session?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from Ms. Fowler. Do I have a second? I'll give that one to Mr. Mike. I have a motion by Ms. Fowler, a second by Mr. Mike. Let's vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative, the motion unanimously carries. Dr. Smith?
It is my honor to welcome Arkilia Cannon, Assistant Principal at Atherton Elementary. And she's coming up. I'm really excited about this one because she started her career in Arlington ISD, I won't tell you what year she started, but she started her career back in Arlington ISD a while ago. She's been on a journey in a couple other districts, and she's back home now, and we're excited to have her be a part of Atherton Elementary and the amazing work that's happening there. So, Arkilia, welcome and thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the esteemed board, and Dr. Smith. It is indeed an honor and a privilege to stand before you today to say thank you for this awesome opportunity to serve the faculty, staff, and students of Atherton Elementary School. I am indeed hyena-happy. I am elephant- elated, and I am peacock-proud for this auspicious opportunity and this amazing appointment. Atherton is indeed a very special place. Quite like Disney, it is the most magical place on earth. I would like to say thank you to my family for their unwavering support. My family that's here in the audience, thank you so much. My family that's watching online, and most importantly, my mom, who's at home back in Mississippi, who is also a retired educator, and my dad that has gone home to be with the Lord, but he is also watching, and he is a retired administrator as well. So, I am indeed thankful for this privilege. I appreciate everyone's unwavering prayers, support, and encouragement. Thank you so much for everything. And also, I would like to take an opportunity to thank none other than the dynamic leader of Atherton Elementary, Mrs. Bianca Ghostin, a trailblazer in education. I appreciate you for giving me this opportunity, and I will serve the faculty, staff, and students of Atherton Elementary to the best of my ability. The mantra at Atherton Elementary is "Once an All-Star, Always an All-Star," and I'm glad to be back at home at Atherton Elementary for such a time as this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon. I would say that as a former Atherton All-Star, that I appreciate you being there, but I guess there are no former All-Stars. At this time, we'll take a brief recess so we can visit with our honorees for tonight. Thank you. All right. We'll be back from recess at 7:56. We'll move on to the next part of our agenda, which is reports. Our first report this evening is a report from the Finance and Academic Committee. Turn it over to Ms. Richardson.
Thank you. Finance and Academics has had the chance to meet once again, and this time, we got to do something a little bit different, and that was to dig in deeper with our staff. One of the things, opportunities that we had was not just to have our Facilities Coordinator, Kelly Horn, there, but to also have other members of staff and to dig into not just what is going on financially with our district, but what is going on with our enrollment, because our enrollment is going to be driving our future decisions. One of the things that we look at as we're wrapping up our 2019 bond projects is what status is everything in? What is the progress we've made? What has inflation done to the budget? It was wonderful to hear that as everything's going on right now, that they have factored in all of that. We are still going to be able to complete all the projects and even have money left over in some small pockets to do some other things that have come to mind that need to be done. As we have been able to tour several of our local schools lately, Bailey Junior High is almost completed. We did an event with, Sarah, remind me the acronym. Tasbe, no, North Texas--
North Texas Area Association.
North Texas Area Association, and we got to meet at one of our local, brand-new elementary schools, Berry, and show that off. One of the things that was really nice, though, was able to ask our staff members deep questions of why are we making some of the decisions we are with our budget, but also where do we need to go in the future? So, with Finance and Academics, we will keep digging into that deeper and seeing exactly what we need to do for the stakeholders of Arlington, but also our students, to provide the best education possible with the budget money we have possible.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We'll now move on to Report B, a report on the teacher incentive allotment. Dr. Smith?
It's my honor to welcome Ms. Dollaris Johnson up to the podium tonight. Dollaris is our Executive Director in the Human Resources Department, and she's going to give you an overview of the teacher incentive allotment. I realize that you may have had a report on this a couple years ago. I think the last report may have been a couple of years ago, and I think four of us at this dais are new since that last report, so I think it's wise for us to have a foundational-level report to know what TIA is and to know about what we're going to be doing over the course of the year in partnership with our teachers and staff.
Thank you. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board. Thank you, Dr. Smith, again, and thank you all for giving me an opportunity to share an overview of the teacher incentive allotment. As Dr. Smith shared, over the next five months, we would like to study and seek input from our teachers and administrators and other stakeholders to collaboratively explore whether or not the teacher incentive allotment is something that Arlington would like to participate in. The vision of TIA is to support districts in building, expanding, and sustaining strategic compensation systems that are able to differentiate teacher effectiveness in all content and grade areas. These systems do prioritize teacher learning and student outcomes. The TIA also incentivizes teachers to stay, and it does support more robust recruitment of teachers. Unlike previous state incentive programs, there is no limit to the number of TIA allotment funds and the number of teachers who may receive a designation. One of the reasons we think it's a good idea to study this, we do believe that the goals of TIA do currently align with some of our district priorities for promoting academic growth, optimizing our resources, and ensuring a safe and productive learning environment. There are two pathways to a teacher, for a teacher to earn a designation. Designations are distinctions awarded to highly effective teachers. The first pathway is through national board certification. Teachers with an active national board certification receive a recognized designation on their teacher certification by the Texas Education Agency. There is a cost associated with pursuing a national board certification. As one of our teacher leadership programs, we supported about 12 teachers who wanted to pursue national board certification by paying the candidate fees upfront and even reimbursing those teachers for completing their national board component. The second pathway to a teacher designation is through a local created designation system. So, how does TIA work? There are three primary TIA designation levels, each reflecting the performance and effectiveness of teachers based on student outcomes and teacher evaluation. Those levels are Recognize, Exemplary, and Master. Each designation level is tied to a specific range of funding that a teacher can earn annually. The teacher incentive allotment is designed to provide targeted support for hard-to-staff schools by allocating more funding to teachers working on high-needs campuses. Ninety percent of the funds received through TIA go directly to teachers, meaning the majority of the investment supports those working closest with our students. And finally, the teachers who earn a designation, whether it's Recognize, Exemplary, or Master, they hold that designation for a full five years. That means, once a teacher is awarded that designation, they are guaranteed to receive the financial benefits tied to that status for five consecutive years, regardless of the district they are in. Each TIA designation comes with the corresponding range of additional annual compensation. The exact amount a teacher can earn within these ranges depends on both the teacher's designation and the socioeconomic status of that campus. Arlington currently has about 13 educators in our system from other districts earning an allotment. In Arlington, the average allotment for recognized teachers is about $5,600; for exemplary teachers is $11,200; and for a master teacher is about $20,800. Again, each campus can produce a unique allotment value, so these numbers may vary, but this provides a strong baseline of what the district could expect should we choose to apply and be approved for a teacher incentive allotment local designation system. There are state-mandated spending requirements associated with the teacher incentive allotment. Again, ninety percent of the funds generated through TIA go directly to teachers who earn that designation, and then up to 10% of the TIA funds can be used by the district to cover costs associated with administering the local designation system. This includes setting up the necessary infrastructure to track teacher performance. It can also be allocated to activities to help teachers meet the criteria for designation. When applying for the teacher incentive allotment, districts have to address three critical questions that form the foundation of a successful TIA application. These questions actually help guide districts in developing a clear and effective local designation system, ensuring that teachers are not only evaluated fairly, but consistently. The first question addresses which teachers and campuses would be eligible for participation in TIA. Districts would have to identify the teaching assignments and campuses that will be a part of the local designation system. Some districts may decide to prioritize their high-needs campuses first to ensure that hard-to-staff schools receive additional support. The second question involves identifying the types of data that will be used to assess teacher performance. Districts need to choose valid and reliable data sources that fairly measure both teacher effectiveness and student growth. Most districts use the tools that are already in their system. And then the third question involves determining how TIA funds will be distributed among designated teachers honoring that 90-10 rule. The teacher incentive allotment aligns with the Texas Teacher Evaluation Support System, or TTEST, which many districts, including Arlington, already have in use. TIA focuses specifically on two domains from TTEST that directly impact teacher designations, Domain Two, Instruction, and Domain Three, the Learning Environment. Teachers must achieve a minimum rating of proficient on these key TTEST domains to be eligible for a TTEST designation. One important requirement under TIA is that all teachers in eligible assignments must be evaluated using TTEST. If a teacher is in a teaching assignment and is being put forth for a designation, they have to be appraised during what they call the data-capture year, so you can't be on an appraisal waiver. In addition to teacher observations, TIA requires districts to correlate TTEST data with student growth metrics. One of the key distinctions of the TIA is its focus on individual student growth rather than overall achievement. This approach recognizes that teachers may work with students at varying starting points, and it measures the progress each student makes throughout the year rather than their final level of achievement. TIA allows districts to use a variety of tools to measure student growth. Commonly used assessments include NWEA MAP Growth, M-Class, and sometimes STAR. Districts can choose the assessments that actually best align with their educational goals and student need. The TIA process spans three years involving two key steps. This multi-year process ensures that districts have enough time to design, implement, and validate their local designation system before fully adopting a program. The first year of the process involves pre-application planning. This is a critical time for districts to engage key stakeholders, talk to teachers, and get feedback from campus administrators and district staff. Also, during the pre-application phase, districts develop their local designation systems. This includes determining which teaching assignments and campuses would be eligible and selecting the data sources that would be used to measure teacher performance and student growth. At the end of Year One, districts submit their TIA system application to the Texas Education Agency. Districts are also required to submit a teacher buy-in survey to Texas Tech University. In Year Two, the district puts that local designation system into action. This is known as the data-capture year. During this time is when teachers, when the districts, excuse me, collect teacher performance data, including observation scores and student growth data. Through the data-capture year, districts track the performance of their teachers and their students, and this data is used as a basis for determining designations under the TIA program. In Year Three is when districts submit the teacher performance and student growth data to Texas Tech University for validation. TTU actually plays a key role in verifying the designations awarded by the district and being sure that they align with the state's criteria for TIA. After TTU validates that data, the Texas Education Agency conducts a review to ensure the local designation system and the awarded designations meet TIA standards. Only after this validation and review will districts receive final approval for the TIA program. There are several neighboring districts who are currently awarding teachers and paying out incentives. Many other districts, such as Fort Worth and Dallas ISD, have already successfully navigated the three-year approval process and are now paying significant incentives for TIA. About 597 across the state of Texas, and within Region 11, it's about 25 school Again, we would like an opportunity to talk to our teachers and study this. We have a few of our neighbors who are already participating and are fully approved districts. We think it is a time to gather meaningful input and hear the voice of our teachers. We'd like to establish a senior-level steering committee to manage the process, ensuring that everyone's voice is heard before making a final decision on whether to move forward with the TIA application. After we've had an opportunity to gather feedback, it may be possible that Arlington does not proceed with the TIA application following that stakeholder input. Our target completion date to gather input is March 1, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Dr. Smith?
Trustees, I just wanted to add, first of all, thank Dollaris. Dollaris has done the heavy lift of getting this information together for us and to be able to have some discussion. I have been very blunt with our HR team, with all of you individually. I am not a fan of pay-for-performance systems, and I am very hesitant about this, and I need to be clear about that going in. I do think it is time for us to study it with the amount of neighboring districts that are involved. Dollaris mentioned 25 districts in Region 11 alone, but 26 districts, so that's in addition to the 25, are currently in the hopper and studying this as well from Region 11. So, it's expanding pretty significantly. I will never turn my back on trying to figure out how to pay our teachers more, and I think it's something for us to take a look at, but I need you to know I am extremely skeptical about all of this, and I am willing to take a step forward and study, but very hesitantly, and I think we do have to be careful of it. I think we have to be careful of making sure it aligns with the culture that we want to create. I think we have to take into account all of the teachers in our system and not just some of the teachers in our system, and I think we also have to realize that the current budget that our commissioner is reporting to request this next year is going to be heavily focused on TIA. And so, taking all of those things in mind, our challenge over the next few months is really to study this and to figure out, is it right for Arlington? Can we do this better than any other district around so it actually impacts our teachers well and our students well and our community well, and will it build off of the culture that we want to create? But I just wanted to share right from the start, I think you all know my hesitancy on this one, and I wanted to be clear about this, that I go into this as a superintendent with some concern because I don't know any research that shows that pay for performance in school systems across the nation has ever paid off, and I just need to be honest about that. So.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, President Chapa. Thank you for that report. That was really, really good. I have a couple of questions. One was, you've already answered, if a teacher comes from a district that had already gotten it, she will receive those funds. Here, he will receive those funds. Number one, where is this money coming from? Did I miss that?
The money is coming from the state, through a state mandate.
And we all know, anytime the state has strings, right? So, if we accept it, you don't know what's going to happen a year or two or whatever from now, because the state always has strings. One thing I wanted to ask, it talks about how the teachers will be assessed, and it'll be the observation and STAR tests and all of that. What about, Dr. Smith alluded to this, what about the teachers who teach art and choir and PE? How will they be measured? Because I don't think it's fair to just offer the incentive to math and English and biology when the other teachers wouldn't have access to that.
Yeah, thank you. That's a very good question. Districts have autonomy in creating their program. They can use different student growth measures outside of state-tested programs like STAR or other assessments. Some districts choose to use SLOs. So, districts have an autonomy in creating what that would look like.
Okay, all right. Thank you. And again, I just voiced my concern that anytime the state has the strings, it's not always as good as it seems. If it seems too good to be true, it probably is, right? So, I don't know. I'd like to see a study as well because I don't trust it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Ms. Richardson?
A couple of questions that I had for you. One of them is, would this involve our special ed department in any way? Do we know that? Do TIAs include special ed?
Yes, there are some districts who have included their special education teachers.
And some that have not, and I think that goes to the whole discussion of who and how that we have to study.
Okay. Is there anything in particular that, you said these teachers can get the certification for five years. Is there anything, which I would hope there would be, that can disqualify them if something does go wrong? Are there boundaries and guardrails in place?
I think it would depend on the system that we set up. I would say absolutely, though. But again, this is us studying for a year to develop our plan, so no plan is currently developed for Arlington ISD.
When we do this and this study, will we be partnering with our teacher unions like UEA and other areas that represent our staff to make sure that they, and not just them, but also just teachers maybe who aren't a part of unions as well, to hear their voices?
Yes, we would like to hear a teacher's voice, whether it's partner with UEA or other teachers.
Is there a plan already in place to partner with UEA?
We've already broached this subject with them prior to this presentation even. We want to do things in partnership and in concert with all of our teachers in the district, and again, this is about study, and so absolutely, we will do that.
Okay. One of the things that, when we talk about, you mentioned that you've just never have seen this done successfully. You don't think of anywhere it's been done successfully?
I don't think there's any research that says that this, in the long term, is great for students or school systems. I think that you and our commissioner will definitely tout different impacts that the current system has, and I think Dallas ISD will be one that they lean on heavily. I think there are some benefits in the question. Whenever I have something that I have a lot of trepidation about, I always try and make sure that I'm curious about it more than anything. The thing I'm most curious about is at what cost? And I don't necessarily mean dollar amount cost. I mean, at what cost of the culture on your campus? At what cost of the focus of whole-child education versus standardized testing improvement? At what cost does some of these things come, and do they align with the values that we have in Arlington? And I think that's what we really have to wrestle with, and we have the opportunity now to study and to ensure that it does align with those things before we submit an application.
You mentioned on our last slide that your target completion is March 1, 2025. When would the board expect to get another follow-up report in regards to this?
I think that we would come back to you in the spring, probably right around that time, after we are able to consolidate the data, make some administrative recommendations, and then bring it back to the Board of Trustees.
Okay. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Mr. Wilbanks?
Thank you, President Chapa, and I apologize for going back on my word from earlier, but I do have a few questions. The thing I like about this is, we know that putting and incentivizing teachers to put them where the need is great-- to put them where the need is greatest brings results, and I like that this is volunteering and that teachers can earn up to $32,000. The hurdle is high to get up earning $32,000 extra. And again, this is not money out of our budget. The state pays for this. So my question is, why wouldn't we want to do it? On slide where you showed the averages for the teachers that have the certification, you show 20 for the master teacher. Do you have that slide up?
Yes.
You show that on average, we pay $20,806, but that's an average because the way TIA works is if you're in a high-poverty school, you earn more than if you're in an affluent school in the district. And so on average, it works out to $20,000 here. The maximum, when I looked at this in the past, one of our school districts didn't qualify exactly for the $32,000, but it was something like $31,000. Is that still correct? Do we know?
I don't know, but I can find out for you.
Yeah, I think we'd have to take a look at that. As it says on the slide here, it's based on some different things. Teacher designation level, but also some characteristics of the campus in which they serve. So I don't have that right off the top of my head, but that's something we can figure out.
Yeah, TEA had, I think, a website where you could look and see what those factors were for a particular school and what the level would be, and it wasn't quite at the max, but it was close to it. So certainly, it was over $30,000. So if we could offer $30,000 for a teacher who was willing to go through this. My only caveat, and the thing that I didn't like about it, is most programs were set up to evaluate them based on STAR data. We all know how I feel on the STAR, how all of us on the dice feel about STAR, but on the next slide, I believe you showed on measuring individual student growth, not achievement, you show that we can choose whatever makes the most sense for us since we use NWEA MAP or M-CLASS or depending on what grade level, but certainly, we know the validity of MAP data to really measure growth accurately, that if we could design it around that and not STAR, that would seem ideal. So I didn't realize we could use something like MAP data to design our system around. And then just, I think, from a competitive standpoint, when you look at our neighboring districts, you know, 500, there's 1,200 districts in Texas, most of them very teeny-tiny and rural. The number of districts that are large and urban like we are is small, but I would venture to guess out of the 597 districts in the state that have completed the process or in process are the larger districts for the most part, and it's certainly true with our peer districts around us. So in terms of attracting talent, we're falling behind. When I look at this, it looks like we're falling behind in terms of offering them a chance to earn significantly more than what an average teacher makes. However, I am sensitive to the comments that Dr. Smith mentioned in terms of impact to the culture, and those are things that I don't want to really look at. The other thing that I think is imperative for us to look at is objective data that we can bring in. Dr. Lopez and her department to look and see, you know, what is the statistical variance between those districts and their student outcomes on STAR versus those districts that don't have it? That's data I've looked at in the past. Now that we have a much wider pool to look at, we need to really look long and hard at that because, you know, there are costs, there's pros and cons, as Dr. Smith pointed out, but if we can accurately measure the pros, we need to bring that data to the, into the equation. So.
If I may say one thing that Trustee Wilbanks brought up, and I forgot to mention earlier, and I don't recall if Ms. Johnson said it. One of the reasons timing is important for us to study right now is when a teacher moves in from another district and we have those funds that come from the state right now, those funds are only good for five years in our district if we don't have our own local designation system. So a teacher that moves to us who's been getting paid and continues to get paid in Arlington, if we don't have a local designation system in place by the end of those five years, that money would go away for that teacher and would potentially hurt our retention of that teacher if they're not getting that big check. So there's a timeline in all of this that's important for us to study, too, realizing we're starting to get teachers that are being paid out through this program from other districts, and we have to decide whether or not we're going to be in or out in the long term.
Ms. McMurro?
Thank you for the presentation. I apologize if you did mention this, but I know that you touched on national board certification. Do we currently offer incentive pay for nationally board-certified teachers?
So our national board certified program, we did pay upfront for the components, and as they matriculate through the program, we do reimburse them for each component that they complete.
Okay. But once you become a nationally board-certified teacher, do we can, like, let's say that teacher stays in the district, do they get annual pay tied to that?
So a national board-certified teacher will become a recognized teacher and have a recognized designation on their certification, so they would receive an allotment.
And that's our current practice, right?
That's statewide.
Okay, okay. And can you tell me if at this point in time, because I know that Dallas ISD, they really pioneered TIA, and like you guys have mentioned, other trustees have jumped in since then, can school districts offer TIA while completely abandoning STAR, or is STAR still required to be at least a component of our rubric? Should we develop one?
Districts have autonomy over which student growth measures to include. STAR does not have to be a component in the local designation system.
Okay, thank you. And then, do we have any guarantee from the Texas Legislature that TIA will continue to be funded by the state?
That's a very good question.
We do not. I can tell you that that is going to be a strong conversation, but as far as past and learning from our past, I think it's fair to say that our legislature has done many things in the past and not continued to fund them beyond a certain number of years, and we have no guarantee ever when it comes to that.
And I know that Trustee Fowler alluded to that very point, but I really want to elevate that because I understand that there's about a dozen teachers who, they're getting paid those funds by the state, but at no point can we guarantee that we will not be footing the bill. And we're talking 30, up to $32,000 per person, and so that is a real liability looking at our current budgetary situation. And I had one more question. Can you go back to the next step slide? Sorry, I'm making you click around. So my understanding is that we did have a district-wide focus group around TIA facilitated by our district lead teachers, and overwhelmingly, they ended up opposing TIA. So what happened with their input?
I think that's what you had a presentation on in the past, and I think it's important for us to be able to say, okay, now that things have evolved, be able to study it again and decide whether or not we want to be in. I think their voice absolutely mattered because potentially otherwise, Arlington ISD would have pursued this earlier. But I think, you know, from my perspective at this point, the game has changed a little bit based on the implementation, and I think it's time to go back out and get their input again.
That's fair. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't a focus group just to fall on deaf ears because things have evolved, but I just wanted to check in because that wasn't, and to me, that really molded part of my assessment, and I'm always willing to look myself at how things are evolving. I think we really need to also look at anecdotal feedback about TIA from neighboring districts that are doing it and have been doing it for years. I have been talking to a couple district-level administrators to get their just anecdotal feedback about TIA and just a couple notes that I've taken over time. Many teachers in my district don't qualify, or they fall just short of receiving it. I see it by being ripe for misuse. Be prepared for people to question whether you deserve it or not. Campus administrators in my district express pressure with T-test evaluations now, given that the salary swing they're now solely responsible for falls on their shoulders. So these are just some of the things we need to be thinking about as a board because once we go in, that is the pressure that we put on our campuses. And I know that we're really trying to do some work with culture. I know that growth is a way better thing to measure than just flat performance, but we also have to consider on a test, the vulnerable students that will not show growth on that standardized or norm reference test. What are we going to do to support those students and teachers? Because what I'm not going to support doing is playing hot potato with them. We need to support our most vulnerable students, and right now, my understanding and what the teachers have expressed from that focus group to me is that that has yet to be figured out, and that really concerns me as a parent, that really concerns me as an educator. And again, we're really trying to do some culture work in our district, and I know that we all would prefer a culture of collaboration, not competition. I personally, as a mom, I feel very uneasy knowing that I would be sending my child, and 3K to 30K hinges on his performance on a test. Whether it's growth or whether it's one-and-done achievement, that makes me really uneasy, and we already have so much pressure that we're putting on our staff, and I don't think they're holding out to do their best work because there might be a stipend. I think our teachers are already showing up every day and giving us their best. That's why I like incentives like national board certification. If it's controllable, I'm all for the pay. And really, the real problem is the state is not releasing funds that we need to pay all of our teachers better. As a district, we've offered 4% raises consistently, and I can feel good about that because teachers can control, right? What positions they take on, and they're already doing their best work. I'm really nervous about the uncontrollables deeming what the pay is, and again, we don't know when that pay is going to stop, and at that point, we would be footing the bill. So I'm interested in learning more. I'm interested in continuing to hear, you know, from teachers, from educators, from neighboring school districts, and I do appreciate you answering all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Mr. Mike?
Thank you for the presentation, and thank you to the admin for actually taking the opportunity to start studying this. I am unaware of a time when Arlington actually went through and studied the TIA program. If it was done, it was before my time, so it's very good. And I hear all the sentiments here on the board, differing opinions with regards to TIA, and noteworthy opinions with regards to this and the culture change. The good thing about this district, though, is we have a new superintendent, right? We've got a new superintendent who is coming in with new ideas, taking the time to study this district and do something positive. We've got a totally revamped board who we're all in for student achievement. So when I look at TIA as a whole, the things that stick out to me is the data never lies. And we've got multiple districts who are utilizing TIA, and on the last page of this, oh, there it is, next steps, is there anywhere in there where the district is going to look at the districts who have already implemented TIA and what the data shows for their campuses?
In short answer, I'd say absolutely. We, the benefit that we have is we had some early adopters in this. They ran out there, some of them fell flat, some of them did okay, and we have the ability to learn from what went well and what didn't go well, student data-wise, but also impact on teacher-wise. So I think that gives us the opportunity to have, I think David mentioned earlier, a broader set of data to look at, and I think this is a good time for us to study that. But student achievement is, yes, going to be something we look at. The longer question is what we look at in student achievement. As you know, I'm pretty hesitant to rely on those that just say all in on STAR for a number of reasons, and I think Sarah just outlined that pretty articulately there, but we will definitely look at that part.
That's great. And then the other thing that, what I really like about this presentation is, as with anything where you have people on both sides of a topic, you'll have the rumors and the myths out there. And so to see that that myth is dispelled where this is only solely focused and tied to STAR is good to know. I like to see that Arlington, if they were to implement this, has the ability to fix it any way that they want. You know, we can implement this at particular campuses, whatever the high needs are, anything. Now, I get the fact that, you know, we don't want to do this pay-for-player competitiveness, but ultimately, at the core that I think of is, are the kids, right? Not to say that the teachers aren't giving them their all right now, but I'm a big fan of giving more to teachers if we can, and however we can do it, that's what I'm a fan of, but I'm glad that the study is moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Are there any further comments, questions from trustees? All right. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
It sounds like there's going to be a lot that hinges on the study in the spring.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to Report C, a report on our drug and alcohol education program. Dr. Smith?
You know, I'm excited tonight. First, thank you to Dollarist for presenting, and welcome to Talisa, our director, Talisa Brown, our Director of Guidance and Counseling, is here tonight to present to us along with her team. I think it's really exciting when we get to show off some of our amazing staff, and you've gotten a couple of presentations tonight from people that don't always present to you, so it's nice to see you here, and we're excited to have this presentation. This is a follow-up. In the spring, we had a board member request of additional information about parent supports for, or education opportunities for drug and alcohol counseling, and so this is a follow-up to that. Talisa, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good evening, President Chapa, Dr. Smith, and to the board. Thank you for allowing me to present today. I am going to share information around the drug and alcohol education program within Arlington ISD. My presentation will include a program overview, current drug and alcohol trends, campus prevention supports that we have in place, partnerships, and professional learning opportunities for our staff. Before I get into the presentation, I would like to introduce the Guidance and Counseling Department. Here on the screen, you see individuals who support our counseling programs throughout our district pre-K through 12. Two of the individuals listed here, I have arrows pointing to them, are our district intervention specialists. They work with our campuses directly around drug and alcohol concerns. They are here today in the audience, and I would like them to stand and wave. Dr. Angela Lawrence and also Mr. Kevin McKinney. Thank you both for being here today. They play an essential part in helping our campuses around our drug and alcohol issues. So when you think about our drug and alcohol program, it's strictly a preventive program, preventive education for not only our students, but also our staff, parents, and also our community. With this preventive education, it includes information about drugs, the dangers of drugs. It also includes individual and group counseling opportunities for our students who are involved in drugs, and also preventive group and individual counseling opportunities. We also have district-wide or campus-wide opportunities for our students to ensure that they are aware of the substance abuse issues that we have in place and also resisting peer pressure, and there are many professional learning opportunities that we have in place for our staff. Our program goal is to educate, educate, educate. Again, not only our students, but also our staff, our parents, and our community. We want to make sure that they are clear and they understand the dangers of using drugs and alcohol. drugs and alcohol. We also want to ensure that we are helping our students direct their focus on academics and making healthy choices. And overall, we want to make sure that we are reducing the amount of drug and alcohol incidents on our campuses, and also eliminating the student-drug-related felonies. So, let's take a look at the drug and alcohol trends. We know that using drug and alcohol can cause problems to your body and your behaviors. Those problems can be physical, fatigue, respiratory issues. Drug and alcohol can impact your emotional state, sudden mood changes involving yourself in risky behaviors. Drug and alcohol use can also impact your school, poor attendance, rising the amount of students who are dropping out of school. And also, social impact can take place for our students, family and peer relationship involvement. So, when we think about the trends that we're seeing on our campuses, the trends that we're seeing right now are vaping. Students are heavily involved with vaping incidents. THC, which is the active ingredient that is in vaping devices, that's in our edibles, that causes students to get the high, also is in marijuana. And then fentanyl, which we've heard a lot about in the news, that's also being displayed in our community and schools, in the form of illicit pills. So, when we think about vaping, vaping is very poisonous. Ninety-nine percent of vapes sold in the United States contain nicotine, despite being marked as nicotine-free. Nicotine is very dangerous to teens, it can cause problems to their brains. And not only as a teen, as students go into adulthood, nicotine can also impact their brain, their body, and many other parts of their body. seizures are also linked to nicotine use that are in vaping devices. THC, as I mentioned earlier, is an active ingredient in marijuana that produces the high. THC comes in many forms of concentrates, which is called, and those many forms can be included as oil, which is commonly seen in our vaping devices, shatter, butter, wax, and in edibles, which I'm going to show you some examples of edibles in just a little bit. When I say edibles, I'm speaking in our food, candy, and drinks. Here on the screen, you see there are examples of these different concentrates that are Shatter, I'm going to ask Angela, if you would please come up, Dr. Lawrence?
So, these are all THC concentrates. It's all the way that THC can be manufactured. And so, all of these are just examples of THC in, in different forms. So, it can be smoked, yeah.
And Angela and Dr. Lawrence and Kevin McKinney are very active in this work on a daily basis, so I may ask them to come up, if you all have questions, to be able to address those questions a little bit better than I would. Here are edibles. As I stated on the slide before, these edibles are being infused with THC, which is the active ingredient to get you high. If you notice that these items are marketing our students, they're marketing kids. The packaging looks just like the packaging that you would purchase at the store, the Skittles, the Doritos, the gummies. Texas law considers possessions of use of THC concentrates to be in a different penalty group than marijuana. Even the smallest amount of THC can be punishable as a felony. THC concentration over 3.3% is considered an illegal amount of THC in Texas. And children as young as 10 years old can receive a felony in Texas. If a student in Arlington ISD receives a felony, they are removed from the traditional educational setting, and placed in a JJAEP placement. Fentanyl is very dangerous. We all have heard one pill can kill. The smallest amount, if you notice on the screen with the pencil, the smallest amount can be dangerous, and it can be deadly. Fentanyl comes in forms of pills, illicit pills. The Control Center for Disease Control, CDC, National Center for Health Statistics, indicate that there were an estimate over 100,000 drug overdose deaths in the United States in 2022. Again, here, these drugs are being marketed for children, for students. In the packaging, the Whopper packages, the candy packaging, the colorful pills are being marketed for our students. Laboratory testing indicates 70% of pills seized by Drug Enforcement Agency DEA was laced with lethal dose of fentanyl. So, what are we doing to support our campuses around these drug and alcohol concerns? Our drug and alcohol education program includes, as I stated earlier, classroom presentations. We talk about the dangerous consequences of drug and alcohol when we're presenting to our students. We have small groups that we're presenting on our campuses. There are campus-wide initiatives that we really enforce and encourage our campuses to be involved in. And then there's also individual student support that we're providing. The drug and alcohol program, education program, also includes preventive education for staff. We want to make sure that our staff is well-aware of what's going on on the campuses. Many of the concealment items are hidden in plain sight. The students use all kinds of vaping devices that you would never imagine to be a vaping device. We make sure that when we're doing our professional learning, that we're helping our staff realize and understand the current national, city, and district drug and alcohol-related issues and statistics. We also partner with our peer departments. So, Dr. Lawrence and Kevin McKinney, they work with our counselors, they work with our assistant principals, nurses, all of these departments we're working very closely with, because this is a issue that we all have to address and be well-aware of. Here are some statistics from the 23-24 school year. The district intervention specialist, Dr. Lawrence and Mr. McKinney, were able to have 86 presentations done throughout the district, with parents, within the community, and also with our AISD staff, and of course, with students. With these presentations, we were able to actively inform all of these personnels, all of these individuals, about 10,996 of them were made aware of the drug and alcohol issues that we have. We also have partnerships. We work very closely with partners to help with this education that we're doing on our campuses. We work with the Challenge of Tarrant County, Recovery Resource Council. Arlington PD works very closely with our district intervention specialists, and we're also working with UTA Arlington. They come in and do presentations with our students around the dangers of drug and alcohol Again, as I stated, our community partners are working very closely with us around those classroom presentations, small groups, and also staff trainings. Not only do we have preventive measures in place, we also have intervention measures in place. Our Student Outreach Services Department, where our social workers are working very actively with students who are already involved in drug and alcohol issues, they're working with those students utilizing small groups, they're working with those students doing individual counseling, they're ensuring that they're connecting with their students to make sure that they understand the dangers that they're in. And hopefully, we're having those students move out of those dangers. We also are very intentional about providing professional learning opportunities throughout the year, not only during the school year, but also during the summers. These are just some of the presentations that we did during the 23-24 school year, making sure, again, that our staff is well-aware of the dangers, and what those concealment items are, and so that they are aware of how they can address and help and support students on their campuses. Okay? Thank you all so much for your time. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Trustees with comments or questions? Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, President Chapa. Very, very informative. Thank you so much for this presentation. You know, I think it's important that, that you all are reaching out to parents and the community, because sometimes, parents don't know what they're supposed to be looking for. And everyone thinks, "Oh, not my child, not my child." But, we know differently. So, tell me what kinds of things that you're doing for the parents? Are you doing presentations? Or, or how are you reaching the community and the parents?
We're definitely doing presentations. Again, I'm going to ask Kevin McKinney and Dr. Lawrence, one of you, to come up and just give a little brief overview of all of the community outreach that you've done around this topic.
Hello, hello, and thank you for having us come and speak and share. A lot of the information that we share to parents is just based on the latest trends, prevention information, what are, what are some of the things that's happening in school as well as our city. We just recently did a presentation with the Police Department. It was called Faith in Blue. Faith in Blue. It was at the, I forgot the name, name of the church. Yeah, it was at St. Matthew's Church. We interacted with 201 people from the community, doing a presentation on the dangers of fentanyl and other drugs in our city and in our schools.
That's great. Do you ever go out into other areas of the community, apartment complexes, for people that don't have access to drive to wherever the presentations are?
Yes, ma'am. Wherever we're asked to come, we show up.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Move on to Ms. Haynes.
Yes, thank you so much for coming. I have a few questions that kind of all go together, so I'm just going to start at the top. In regards to the presentations with the students, so I know you have them on campuses. My daughter's been to some alcohol presentations that happened during testing period, when she's not part of a testing group. So, I guess my first question, how do you select the campuses you're going to give a presentation at? Are they mandated? How do you select the topics? Can campuses opt out?
Right. So, no, they're not mandated. We are only making presentations at campuses where we're invited. So, we put the word out there, we make them aware of what we're able to do, as far as our whole group presentations, our small groups, and those campuses that invite us to come out, we come out to those campuses to present.
Okay. Why, and I guess I'm asking my fellow trustees and you, why would this be an invitation-only situation? Fentanyl is an epidemic. It's real. And why are we waiting to have our interventionalists invited to a campus, to talk with a very captive group of individuals? They're on campus, they need to be spoken to, and it should not be invitation-only. We should be taking advantage of that and speaking to them. So, as a parent of two children in that age range, I would like to advocate for you guys to be on campuses, regardless of if you're invited to give these presentations. So, that's, I have that. I also would like to ask about public safety announcements. I was told that potentially, those are created and maybe sent out to parents, maybe not. I've never received one as a parent, so I'd like to know if that is a form of communication that is potentially being utilized? And if so, how is that disseminated out to the parents? And is that also optional?
We've sent out those type of public announcements to campuses, for them to present and show on their campus. But as far as parents, have you sent those out to parents?
Yeah, it's up to the--
Kevin, do you mind coming up, please? Do you mind coming up?
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, it's up to the schools to basically determine whether, like, that's important. Like, you as a parent, speaking on that, and it being important, is up to the school deeming, "Hey, this information is important enough to be out, you know, sent out to our parents." But we do have PSAs that we formulated over the past few, few years, that we begged to have--
But it was important enough for you to create?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes. Ms. McMurro?
Thank you, President Chapa. Thank you, Ms. Brown. I appreciate the work you, I know the whole team is not here, but I just want to commend you all, because the work that you do, it really does save lives. There's no way for us to measure how many, but the work you do on the daily, it just makes all the difference. And I'm glad that Ms. Haynes brought up fentanyl, because the reason why I, I asked for this presentation is because it keeps me up at night. And just as fentanyl evolves, I hope that our, our avenues to reach students and parents does as well. And so, you know, I don't have the answer, and I know this is absolutely under staff's purview, but I do hope that all campuses can eventually have access to those critical, even, even if it's, you know, once per year, I don't know what the frequency would be, but I do believe that all of our students, they need that information. Because if you read the testimonials from parents who have lost children to fentanyl, the, the common theme is, "I didn't know," or "my child didn't know." And that's just heartbreaking to me. So, I think, what can we do, right, as a school district, to make sure that our families, they at least know the dangers, right? So, I do appreciate that. Fentanyl keeps me awake at night, and I, I know that I'm not the only, not the only person in the room that shares that sentiment. So, I do, I do want to know, do you guys have, like, any, any way to get feedback from, you, you guys have given so many presentations, and I'm sure a lot of them are, are, you know, repeated over a course of time. Do you guys have any way to get feedback from students, from parents, and then, how do you guys keep your information? Because what you've shared with us, you've educated us. I didn't know that, I didn't know that a lot of these were forms of the drug, the drugs. How do you guys stay abreast of what's going around? And, I mean, how, how do you guys make sure that that is being understood by whatever stakeholders you're presenting to? Thank you.
So, we are part of a coalition in DFW that has pretty much all the players, that, anybody that's involved in drugs and alcohol. So, we have doctors, people in psychiatric hospitals, educators, and we meet about two to three times a month, depending on what's going on, and we just share information. And so, that's kind of how we stay on, you know, abreast of all the, the drug trends, as well as just our personal research. We meet with Arlington PD, with Fort Worth PD. We've been recently invited out to meet with Fort Worth PD to see, you know, again, what's going on in the, in the metroplex. So, that's how we kind of stay abreast of drug trends. And as far as feedback, we do professional developments, and, and that's how we get feedback from our staff. As far as students, we are not necessarily getting feedback from students, but staff have always said, you know, that this information is just really important, that they too feel that, you know, it should be in all schools.
Thank you. And I, I do share that hope, and I think the more we can be preventative on this front, to me, that's the only way, because in many cases, there's no other option, because with fentanyl, that lethal dose, there is no, there is no reactive move. It's, it's do or die. So, I appreciate y'all's work, and I, I do hope you get more time on campuses. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Ms. Richardson?
Well, Dr. Smith had his button lit up before me, so do you--
Oh, I didn't realize it was on. Sorry about that.
I was going to say age before. No. I got to tell you, on the list is Red Ribbon Week. I struggle with Red Ribbon Week. I have a kid right now, my youngest is in fifth grade, so we're wrapping up elementary school, and Red Ribbon Week, to him and myself, isn't about doing drug, not doing drugs. It is about, do we have neon clothes for Monday? Do we have crazy hair for Tuesday? On Wednesday, Mom, I forgot to tell you, it's mismatched socks, and on Thursday, I need-- what are we doing for our elementary kids? He's going to go to junior high next year, and all that, his drug program information that he's getting in elementary school is teaching him how to dress crazy and put a lot of stress on Mom, because I forgot to tell her what to do. I, I know Red Ribbon Week, I remember being in elementary school in Sherman, Texas, and getting it pinned on me, and you go, and you wear it, and I remember that. I remember McGruff the Crime Dog. I was a child of the 80s, and Dare, and Nancy Reagan, you know, "Just say no." What are we doing differently? Because it seems like the red week, Red Ribbon Week of my childhood is being duplicated now in my own children, and I don't see it doing anything for our elementary kids. Tell me something different, please.
Okay. So, I share your sentiments around Red Ribbon Week. It's difficult for us, because again, on the prevention side-- It's difficult for us because, again, on the prevention side, there's only two of us. It's Kevin and I. So we do Red Ribbon Week presentations, and they get booked sometimes the year before.
Oh, wow.
So everybody wants us for Red Ribbon Week, and there's two of us. So we are booked Red Ribbon Week, the week before Red Ribbon Week, and the week after Red Ribbon Week in elementary schools right now, Kevin and I, to do presentations. They do, we do provide them with Red Ribbon Week yard signs, stickers for all the schools in the district. We also provide resources, whether it's morning announcements or coloring pages, word searches that they can do as well. But as far as presentations, Kevin and I are very busy during the month of October, November, trying to get out to all the elementary schools who request us.
Is there something that we could do as a district, especially for our fifth and sixth graders headed into junior high, that would better prepare them in your eyes?
I think they need this information. If we could, if we could present to all fifth and sixth graders in the district, that would be beneficial.
Does that look like, is there something, with it only being two of you?
Yes.
You know, limited, limited resources, limited people, limited time. Is that something that we can take year-long and have you booked at every campus for fifth and sixth grades? Is that a possibility? Are you so busy with middle school and high school that we can't even give our elementary schools that time?
We do have partnerships. So we're with, like I said, Mas for Youth that Ms. Brown talked about, UTA, they come in with all of our sixth graders. Well, it's opt-in, it's optional. They come out to sixth graders and do drug prevention, and then we have Recovery Resource Council that will be also doing presentations with some of our DEA students. So we're looking into doing that. Kevin and I are also working on an ongoing kind of like drug fact sheet that our SOS workers, because there's more of them, can also utilize so that, like, we prepare, we have all that information. And then if you want to do a presentation or make a flyer or have some kind of drug facts on your campus, you have this ongoing, up-to-date fact sheet, and Kevin and I are currently working on that.
Obviously, it's relevant in my mind with the fifth grader headed into junior high next year. I wonder if when these teachers are getting these kids ready and they're talking about, hey, you are going to have to find your own class, and you're going to have to be responsible, and you, hey, by the way, we need to put 30 minutes in there about, and here's what also is going to probably happen. Because with my own children, I've quit saying, if it happens to, when it happens, you will be offered, you will see it, what will you do? Because you have to have your mind made up before, because if you're expected to make up your mind when it's offered to you or when it's going on, so often peer pressure is going to get the best of you.
Right.
Or you're going to be scared and not know what to do. I would love for us to find ways to address it younger, with more knowledge and more information. So thank you for letting me be very sincere about my frustrations with Red Ribbon Week.
Share them.
The other question I have is, what is the use that we have with Narcan in our schools right now?
Okay.
And what is the availability that we have with that?
So all--
I think Dr. Hill might be able to come up and add a little bit on that as well.
And let me say, I'm asking a question for a reason, and one of the reasons I have been told by different nurses is, they don't have enough. And I was wondering, is there validity to that?
So, first of all, I think it was a mandate, state law, that said that we had to have it, and we put it in the nurses' immediately. Unfortunately, we've had to use it, and unfortunately, we've had to buy even more of it. If there is a shortage, a net mentally has it in the directive nurses' office, and we can restock that at any point, but it's available. And we actually trade probably a handful of staff on every campus on how to administer that.
And I understand, from speaking with pharmacists, that Narcan has to be administered basically immediately for it to be effective. And so it's not a failsafe where we say, it's okay, it's in the nurse's office, and we've got 10 minutes to get to it. It's something we have to have readily available for our students. Thank you for this. I know this is not a fun presentation that you do. Is there anything that we could do as a board to better support your department? Because when we support your department, that means we're also going to better support our families and our students.
Allowing us to be in all of the campuses and to really get the word out of the dangers sustaining from peer pressure, and just ensuring that all are educated. If we have that opportunity, I think that will help.
Could I ask that, when maybe, not maybe, when you do one of these presentations, would you send a board invite calendar out to us? Priscilla Acosta is who handles ours. I think you have several of us that would like to come and sit in and observe. One, to be supportive of y'all, but also to educate ourselves and be able to spread that to our constituents and stakeholders who, maybe they're going to hear it differently if we share it.
Absolutely.
Any further comments or questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brown. We'll now move on to Reports D. This is an update on our International Baccalaureate Program. Dr. Smith?
Dr. Wertz is on his way up to give you a brief overview of current trends in our IB programs and talk about potential next steps.
I'm wondering how I put this podium down. I'm short. Good evening, President Chapa, members of the board. Dr. Smith, I'm here this evening to give you an update around the International Baccalaureate Program here in Arlington, I.S.T., and some recommendations that we have moving forward. This was previously presented to the Academic and Finance Committee, and it was, we were invited here to the board to get your feedback. Goals this evening are for me to share with you a long, some longitudinal information or data to give you some context about how IB implementation has been going across the district over the last several years, and then to gain any feedback from you around programming that we're anticipating in terms of refinement for the 25, 26 school year. So a little bit about the International Baccalaureate Program. It's a rigorous academic program designed for students to be able to be engaged in learning in a way that provides them with a global perspective. Students who participate in the IB diploma program start in their junior year of high school, and we currently have the diploma program available for students at Arlington, Bowie, Lamar, and at Sam Houston High School. I wanted to share with you a little bit about the college and career programming that has been embedded into our system over the years, and there, I share this with you for context in future slides. But you can see since 2013, lots of choice has been added to our system. We've added two early college high schools, we've added P-Tech programs, we have Dan Diaper Career and Tech Center, and then we've also added additional pathways in our CTE program and added dual-credit weighted course opportunities for students at all of the high schools. Our system today, in terms of college and career programming, looks very different than it did 10 years ago. I wanted to mention those things only as you can keep those in mind as we start talking about where student choices are and what they're choosing in terms of their own programming as they're progressing through their high school years. These are the current IB course trends over the last several years at each of the high schools where IB programming is offered. When we say course trends, we have two opportunities for students when it comes to IB programming. They can take one-off courses as electives, and many students choose to do this because they are weighted. And then we have other students who participate in courses as part of their actual diploma program or a pathway. This slide specifically talks about students who, or it shows you the numbers for students who are taking courses as electives or one-offs, not necessarily students that are participating in the diploma program. Students that are in 11th grade who are initiating their work in the diploma program at each of the high schools, this shows you the numbers in each of the high schools by year. So you can see, if you were looking at the first line in Arlington High School in 2021, 2022, there were 13 students, and that has gone year to year, where today, in 24, 25, they currently have six students that are 11th graders participating in the IB diploma program. When those students matriculate into 12th grade, they participate in their second and final year of the diploma program, and you can see what the trends have looked like in terms of school programming as a district for 12th graders participating in diploma This shows you a concise slide that shows you all the participation in terms of enrollment of students across grade levels in the 24, 25 school year, so this school year, in terms of students that are enrolled in an actual course, just as an elective, versus 11th and 12th graders who are participating. So the sum of all the three slides that I was just showing you. Now, there are program costs attached to implementing, obviously, IB programming. The costs that I have shown in front of you right now are programmatic costs. They do not include payroll. So this would be really focusing on costs that are related to professional learning. You have to pay a specific fee every year to be named as part of an IB world school. These also include costs for books and also costs for students to participate in the testing. You can see here, in the 24, 25 school year, we have, we spent about $238,000. That's what we're anticipating spending this school year. And so this equates about $1,100, $1,000 per student who enrolls in a course, and upwards to $11,000 per student, if you think about it in terms of the number of graduates of a diploma program. So we started thinking about, how do you ensure that you have a high-quality program that really provides a pathway for students who are genuinely interested in pursuing a diploma program while also being fiscally responsible? And we started seeking feedback from principals. And what principals across the four schools have been saying, and as well as teachers and the leads that we have that participate or lead the advanced academics at each of their schools, is that students now have many more choices than they had when the district onboarded IB programming many years ago. And when they, when students make choices to participate in IB program, which initiates itself in the 11th grade year, by 10th grade, students often have already decided pathways that they're interested in. Right now, the way we do high school, of course, is a double-block schedule, and double-blocked athletics and fine arts creates a real challenge for students to commit to an IB program without adding either summer courses or participating in a zero hour. Also, there are some outside-of-school obligations for students who participate in IB diploma program that are service-oriented, so students who want to participate in the program have to also do volunteer projects, which also take additional time. And then committing staff to a few number of students to meet the rigorous expectations of IB impacts the broader population on a college, I mean, on a high school campus in college-bound kind of courses, because you have teachers and student ratios that don't always equate to each other. And then finally, consolidating IB program and offering it fewer campus may actually help with some recruitment and some sustainability in terms of really recruiting kids deeply into the program and sustaining it in a viable way across overtime. So we, after receiving feedback and considering all of our options, we have some refine, we have some refinement that we want to recommend for the 25, 26 school year. And for that, for next school year, we're recommending that 12th graders, so students who are currently in 11th grade, who would be moving to 12th grade, that they be allowed at each of those four schools to continue and finish their program. So anybody that started, support them all the way until they finish. We are recommending that we consolidate the IB programs at Arlington, Bowie, and Lamar High Schools to one location, at Sam Houston High School. 12th graders who are currently in the IB program at all four of the campus will continue, and then the IB diploma program will no longer be offered to rising 11th graders at Arlington, Bowie, and Lamar High School. In other words, as I was saying, if you're in 11th grade and you go to 12th grade, we will support you through the program so you can finish. If you're a 10th grader moving into 11th grade, you're making course selections next year at the schools of Arlington, Bowie, and Lamar, the IB coursework will not be available. We will also have the option to create an open enrollment IB courses for electives only if there is room in the course. So if there is a pathway that's at a school, and there, the class is not full, and a student wants to participate in IB course, they can participate as long as the class is not full. We have that model similarly at the STEM Academy at Martin High School. STEM courses are typically for STEM students. However, general ed students who are not part of STEM Academy can partake in some of those courses as long as the course is not filled. Our recommendation is to offer the diploma program, as I mentioned, at Sam Houston High School as a specialized program. Students would complete an application to enroll at Sam Houston, and they can enroll as a ninth grader or as an 11th grader and commit to participating in the IB program in their 11th grade year. So if you are a student who wants to transfer to Sam Houston High School with the intent that you would participate in IB diploma program in 11th grade, you can apply as a ninth grader. If you want to wait till your 11th grade year, you can transfer at that point, too. What we really want to do is create an IB pathway. So right now, we have a PYP program, which is at the Elementary School Crow Leadership Academy. There's a gap in the middle, which they have a middle-years program that is for students that are between the ages of 11 and 16. So middle-years program goes into the high school years at ninth and 10th grade. We would like to consider building a pathway which would include a middle-years program so that students could, if they chose to participate in IB programming from their elementary grades all the way through their entire school career. And we're looking at implementing that at one of the junior highs within the Sam Houston feeder pattern. So our next steps after this evening is to take your feedback and then share final programming decisions with counselors and make any adjustments for course selection in the 25, 26 school year. And then, of course, assuming that we move forward, that we would create specialized IB program webpage and, you know, work with campuses and generate interest for students. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions from trustees? Ms. Fowler?
Thank you, President Chapa. Just throwing this out, I know that the population is quite large at Sam Houston, just like it is at Martin. Would we think about maybe moving the IB program to a school like Sagin that has lower enrollment and probably more room?
Yeah, so we, there is room at Sam for the program. The reason why we strategically were selecting Sam is because we're trying to generate a pathway that goes where kids naturally go to school all the way through elementary school. So Crow, right now, where PYP sits, is in the Sam Houston feeder pattern. IB already sits at Sam. It doesn't, it's not at Sagin, but it is at Sam right now. So what we would be able to do is build on the program that's already in place at Sam, consider potentially NYPD in the ninth and 10th grade years at Sam, and then push our way down into a pathway where kids that are in the feeder pattern could have their entire experience without having to jump across feeder patterns. Now, if there was a student at Sagin, of course, they could transfer, but the reason why we were selecting Sam is because it's a program we can build on in their space.
Great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Fowler. Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Chapa, and thank you, Dr. Wertz, for having this long overdue conversation. I want to preface my remarks in saying that I'm a big fan of IB. My daughter had the privilege of attending an IB middle school in Buenos Aires and loved the program so much that when we came back here, she was excited that Lamar High School offered it, and she had visions of graduating through the IB program at Lamar and going back to Buenos Aires, to the University of Belgrano, and do her undergraduate studies. That didn't work out. And unfortunately, the program just never really took off at Lamar, and like at other schools. And now we have such a wide array, as you mentioned, of other options. The issues for her were the issues that you touched on. She couldn't double-block orchestra and some of the other activities and participate in IB at the same time. So, given the numbers and the enrollment, we've needed to have this conversation for a long time. I still support IB. I like that we're looking at building out a middle-years, but consolidating the program just makes so much sense, and I look forward to supporting this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Any further comments or questions from trustees? Dr. Smith?
Dr. Wertz, I just wanted to make sure we pointed out, too, throughout this process, you've been in discussion with principals throughout this as well. Can you share a little bit about their sentiment in all of this?
Yes, principals are very much in favor of our recommendation. I think they, they see all the same things that you've mentioned, Mr. Will Banks, which is the low enrollment, the interest shifting with their students, and even the staff that we've spoken to have talked about the ability to sustain a program in a real meaningful way if it's consolidated and built out. So we have support from principals, yes.
So I have a couple of questions, one of which is, it seems like the student enrollment in courses at Arlington High has significantly increased each year. Other campuses that have the IB program, it's a little hit or miss, but, you know, kind of bouncing up and down significantly lower numbers. What is, but there's not, it's not translating into enrollment in the diploma program.
Yeah.
So what's happening at Arlington High that enrollment is, it looks like in four years, almost doubled in course enrollment?
Yeah, I'm going to actually kick that over to Karen, because we've asked that question specifically, even if it was about recruitment into program. So I'm going to let Karen. This is Karen Zeski. I failed to introduce her at the beginning. She's our Director of Advanced Academics who oversees IB program, and she can answer your question.
Absolutely. At Arlington High in particular, it's about teachers and teacher recruitment. Most of those numbers beyond a regular-sized IB classroom are in English, and they have two particular English teachers who are very dedicated to the IB program and actively recruit. And so many students that cannot fit the entire program into their schedule-- And so many students that cannot fit the entire program into their schedule have found that that, those two courses for the junior and senior level English IB program choices are, they fit really well into helping them get ready for college and their next thing. And, and they're just choosing that instead of AP on that campus. And it's, it's really a recruitment issue in the majority at Arlington High. Not all, but the majority are in the English program.
Is that the, is that a regular English, is like an IB English class? Is that theory of knowledge?
No, it's IB English.
Okay.
There's two different levels, one for junior, one for senior. Theory of knowledge is a different, it's a separate course.
And is it possible for students who take that IB English class to get college credit out of that class?
Yes.
And what would they need to do to get the college credit?
They work through the, through the course and work on the assessments. IB has usually more than just the one sit down assessment. There are two, two or three different things they do depending on the course. There is a sit down exam in May and then one or two other assessments that happen during the year. If they earn a four, five or six on the exam, they can earn college credit.
So is there, and I think this is going to be a problem unique to Arlington High and these particular classes, is there, what's the plan to transition clearly a, some very valuable teachers who have a very unique skill set that are in high demand? What's the plan to keep that going in a non-IB way?
Let me speak to that a little bit.
Yes.
Okay. So students who are interested in advanced programming, obviously will still be available to them. Right now in courses, some courses are completely built out where the, the entire class are IB students, but in many cases, they're actually stacked. So we will do course selections like kids normally do. All the advanced placement programs that'll be available at Arlington High will still be there. And then the staffing of the school will reflect where the students' interest in courses are. The only difference would be that Arlington High would be that that's the specific thread that's IB programming. For example, the English IB course, that would be the one that would go away, not for the seniors next year, but for the juniors. Yeah.
And when you say it's stacked, I mean, is it multiple IB classes stacked together or is there such thing as there's IB English and it's also AP English?
Yes, that's exactly what it is.
So essentially those teachers will still be able to, to do their thing. It will be AP English exclusively, though.
That's correct.
Okay. So that makes me feel a little bit better about it. So I have mixed feelings about this. Ms. Will Banks is right, this has been a long time coming, this conversation. I think it's a conversation that districts that have invested in IB and frankly AP and other models, including dual enrollment, are facing because we're seeing an increase in our number of students taking dual enrollment. And I mean, I think families and students are sometimes pretty rational actors and that makes sense because as long as you pass your dual enrollment class, you get college credit, whereas AP, I mean, it's a little bit more of a, of a shoot, right? Like you could get an A in an AP class and if you get a two on your AP exam, you don't get the college credit.
That's correct.
So I think we've, you know, with all of the best intentions, we have, we have all done this to ourselves and the state's created incentives for us to do it. My, I guess my question is, is with these number of, with such low number of students doing the IB diploma, I have a couple of questions. One is, what is the realistic hope that this is going to, we're going to build this out with MYP, we're going to build the program and feeder at Sam, which frankly, I love IB. I would be happy to have that as a flagship program at Sam Houston, being a Sam alum myself, and I really like that. But the putting on my hat about how does this fit in strategically when we're facing significant headwinds on the funding side and with the numbers so low, was the realistic hope of it actually materializing that we're going to make this pattern? And, and why not, and I hate to say this, but we've done this before with other programs, why not just pull the plug?
So it's a good question and we did ask it. I think the thing that we're really trying to think about is how many students do you actually need in any specific cohort to have a viable program? And you need about 25. So we'll have to monitor the numbers in terms of recruitment along the way to make sure that it's actually going to make. Otherwise, you would, you would, that would be the question that we would have to ask. We do believe that part of the reason why interest wanes with IB is because there is such a gap in terms of knowledge about it. For example, if you're a student that's in like Crow Leadership Academy, for example, and you might've had it for the first six years of your elementary career and then you go to junior high and then you go to high school, you're going to have some knowledge base, but that's unique to Crow. Most, most students in the district learn about IB through their counselor as they're thinking about their, their course selection, but there is not an articulated pathway that would promote that kind of learning in a unique way that we can now do. So our hope and belief is that, one, we know the cohort size needs to be about 20, 25 and we believe that if we generate a pathway where kids are naturally engaged in that type of learning where their interest is being piqued and it's meeting their individual needs, that we could probably continue to sustain it in high school. Right now, that gap, I think generates a lot of disparities across campuses in terms of enrollment.
Okay.
Yeah.
And you didn't, I mean, there, we've got the programming costs here, which in the scheme of things, not, not a whole lot, but you didn't mention, you know, staffing costs. And when you add in the staffing costs, what is the actual all in cost that we're looking at?
It's a good question. I don't have that number off, but I can, I can get it to you. We, we, the, the one I'm sharing with you today is programming, but I would have to pull the teacher actual costs related specifically to IB. I don't have that with me tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I hope, I mean, I hope, like I said, I hope it pans out. I'm a fan of the program. I would love to see this feeder pattern materialize. My, my, my real fear, though, is that with so many, you know, those kids coming out of eighth grade, and I'm assuming that we're probably thinking, you know, it's one of the, probably going to be with Rodriguez or Workman. There's so many pulls on those kids, right? I mean, we've got now, we've got four PTEC programs, we've got Martin STEM, we have two early college high schools like, and I, and I think disproportionately our early college high schools by, from what I've sensed is that disproportionately are already pooling from Sam clusters. So I have a real worry that this is just not eventually going to pan out and I just, you know, at least from my perspective, if it reaches a point sooner rather than later that it looks like the investment is not going to be, is going to be more than the actual benefit, given all of the other programming that we have available in the advanced academic space, I, I would not be afraid to have a discussion about whether or not we continue with this program. That's all I have. Any other comments or questions from trustees?
Can I add two things real briefly?
Dr. Smith?
Just real quickly on that, the, the staffing costs are interesting because I think if you start taking a look at the number of teachers teaching IB sections, those teachers are included in the ratios that we have for our schools already. So it's not necessarily an additional cost for those bodies, but any IB only positions that we have maybe that aren't in the classroom teaching, those might be included in those costs. So that might be a little bit of the, the challenge that we have in this.
That's right.
And then the second thing is, I wanted to point out, there are many models about the middle years program and, and I hear loud and clear your concerns about making sure it's a viable option. I do think that our gap is really large here and it's not just at the junior high, it's also at the ninth and 10th grade. Right now, the experience of ninth and 10th graders at Sam don't really reference anything about a middle years program. In some typical middle years programs that I've seen, you actually go middle years program at the junior high level and also at the ninth and 10th grade level. So it's a continuous learning experience from the kindergarten experience at Crow up through a junior high school and into the diploma program at Sam. I really think we probably lose a lot of kids at that ninth and 10th grade year because their eyes are open about all of the different options all of a sudden. And you know what? They don't talk a lot about those IB opportunities. But if middle years program, if the model we land on is ingrained in, in seventh, eighth, ninth and 10th, that cluster at Sam has a, a constant language and learning experience. So more kids in that cluster would be able to say, you know what? I see myself as an IB diploma program student and I can do this because my learning's been continuous through the system. So I think some of it is going to depend on the model that we land on and, and we'll see. And to your point, if we get down the road and it's not fruitful for our students, I do think we have to have that conversation. We have to be able to say, this didn't pan out and we'll go back to the drawing board and see if it's, if it's really viable for us in the future or not.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Smith. Dr. Wertz?
All right. Thank you.
We'll now move on to our two action items for the evening. The first one is action item A, 2024, 2025 district key progress measures.
Trustees is, Dr. Collins is coming up tonight. She's going to present to you some things and I'll weigh in toward the end. We've been through a process over a number of months now, landing on priorities and then narrowing down into what we're calling key progress measures. Remember, this is an important discussion here tonight. We can't do everything and these are just the highlights of things that we would talk about in our board meetings and that would be on my superintendent evaluation for the upcoming year as well. There are some things that I know some of you will say, oh, but I wish we could have done X or, and I, and we totally understand that. We'll hopefully answer some of those questions tonight.
All right. Good evening, President Chapa, trustees and Dr. Smith. We're excited to be back talking with you again about our district priorities and the key progress measures. As you know, we have been talking about these topics for many, many meetings. We've had specific board meeting discussions, you've had individual conversations, our administrative staff has weighed in and so we are here tonight to present some key progress measures for your consideration. So as a reminder, priorities were adopted back during our meeting on September 19th and then during our October 3rd meeting, we looked at a long list of over 20 potential key progress measures and we heard your input about the things that were important to you. These are the priorities that were adopted and the way that we are defining those priorities and we are beginning to see these pop up in other presentations as well. Thank you, HR, for attaching your work to these priorities. So the format of the priorities and the key progress measures, the priorities are a statement. It's that big, broad, transformational statement that puts us all in a direction so we can head our arrows towards the same outcome. And then the key progress measures are in SMART goal format and we want them to be leading measures instead of lagging measures when at all possible. And so this is a graphic that we looked at at our previous meeting. A lag measure is at the end of an experience and so it's the result of the past where a lead measure is predictive of future performance. So we have done some work and heard your feedback and talked to others as well and have tried to narrow down our key progress measures. You'll see that we've gone from a list of 21 down to a much smaller list and this is our recommendation to you regarding key progress measures for the 24, 25 school year. I will reiterate that some of the things that were on the page during our October 3rd meeting, even if they aren't going to be on our key progress measures dashboard where we're presenting back to you on a regular basis, many, many, many of the host activities are going to continue to happen in the system because it's work that's already moving forward. So I will open up the floor for discussion.
All right, trustees, comments or questions? This is an action item, so also keep that in mind if you have things that you would like to suggest or change. Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. Quick question. I know that we talked about this most recently when we were reviewing the employee engagement survey. We saw that safety and discipline was top of the mind and we really want to support our staff in that area. Can you, and you might not know the details around this, but can, I know that it did probably take a lot of discussion to narrow the KPMs this much. Can you or Dr. Smith elaborate on the behavior support action plan? What, what will that entail that we know of so far?
Yeah, so we know that conversations are beginning. We've begun to have some dialogue with campus leaders and our teachers as well. I don't know that I can speak directly to what it will look like in the end, but what we know is that it can't be the same for every campus. We need to have individual plans to meet the needs of individual things that are happening out there on the campus and so we want to make sure that our plans are aligned to those needs.
I think the only thing that I would add, there are two pieces of the puzzle. One are responsive needs. We know that there are behaviors on the campus that we need to be able to respond to administratively and with additional support sometimes depending on the need of the student. We have to have targeted ways and specific ways to be able to do that and we have to articulate those well to our campuses and I think that's a need in our system right now.
Okay.
The second piece of that puzzle is, is that when it talks about an individual plan, there's capacity building as well. There are responsive, responsive actions that we need to have, but capacity building items as well. And I think the, each individual plan will be based on the needs of the individual campus regarding the behaviors that they see. Dr. Buell is going to be presenting to the board, should you choose, as officers to continue with that, in November about the work that our behavior task force has been working on and will be able to elaborate specifically about this. But it is loud and clear in our system that this is a need from our campuses and this is a direct result of that loud and clear need that we have heard from our staff. So we will make sure that that is targeted to the needs of our system.
Okay. And then I, I was, I was really happy to hear you say capacity building. So by that, do you mean a more proactive approach instead of a reactive approach?
That is correct. I think there's a couple of things when I talk about that. One, there is, and it's work that actually started this summer and I'm proud to say that, but there was proactive work that was started this summer with staff members across the district. So teachers were able to engage in professional learning opportunities about dealing with some of those behaviors. But I want to be clear, we also know that it's not just how a teacher quote deals with it. It's about creating the culture and the climate in the classroom for every student to be successful, too. And so our work this summer helped focus on that. We also need some responsive services when things are out of control in a classroom and we need to be able to articulate what those are. And so that, it's a, it's got to be a more holistic approach, not one or the other.
I love that and I think it's what students deserve. I think it's what staff deserves. Nobody wakes up in the morning just wanting it to be a bad day. I think that our teachers really do, they want those tools in their toolbox and some of, some of the situations that arise in our classrooms, they were unanticipated and the, the more clarity and support we can give them around, you know, how to effectively not just manage, but, but educate our students as they, as they grapple with their emotions and behavior, I think that that will really help us mold and shape the, the community member that we want to graduate from our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McMurro. Are there other trustees with comments, questions? I'm not seeing any at the moment. I, Mr. Will Banks?
Thank you, President Chapa. And I like what I'm seeing here. There's one of my favorites that's missing, but I think I know the reason why. But looking at safety and discipline, I was noticing that is not really a SMART goal. And I'm wondering if we can add survey result data on teachers, feedback on safety and discipline issues to that as KPIs for that priority.
I think we can definitely do that. I do think that that would be a way to measure the teacher support level of it and I think that we can definitely explore that. That's a good catch.
And then I'm going to make one more pitch for, you know what? And I'm competitive and I know it's a lag indicator, but I think that is a good long-term goal if we want to be a premier school district. We need to make sure that we're leading the charge amongst our peers across the state and not having, I'm disappointed that there's not a SMART goal that is set to that, but I know that is a long-term objective that we need to monitor and that certainly belongs in our strategic plan, I hope.
I would, I would add, Mr. Will Banks, for those of us that have shorter memories than others, can you remind us of what you're talking about?
And I could add some context, too. Can I jump in real quick?
Go ahead and jump in.
Mr. Will Banks, at the last meeting had asked about creating a SMART goal about comparison districts. And the way we'd like to approach that is we'd actually like to present to the board in the next couple of months, some comparison districts that we will use on a regular basis when we're presenting data to you. We were, we're debating on whether or not that had to be a SMART goal in here. I don't know that until we start getting into the data and we look at it together as a team, that SMART goal might be the right way to go. But I think starting to present to you all how some of our peer districts are doing around the state and even maybe some of our stretch districts are doing, gives you and I, the ability to talk about that. And in the future, should we start to set a SMART goal around that, I think we're more informed in that conversation at that point. So that's the way we'd like to approach that, if that's okay.
I will give the two of you grace on that.
Thank you.
As long as we can start having that conversation going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Will Banks. Are there any further comments or questions? I will, I have one question. On the marketing and engagement, on number one, these are some very specific numbers and I don't have a benchmark for what we're currently doing. So can you give me a sense of 10 positive media mentions and 150 social media posts per month? How that compares to what we do now?
So we work directly with our communications team to look at the goals that they had set specifically for their team and this is one of those pieces. Anita, is there anything that you would want to add? Yeah, so it's in line with the goals that you've set for your team for this year.
So that, that works out to about five social media posts every day. I'm assuming that's through different mediums. It's not just five Facebook I'm assuming that's through different mediums, it's not just five Facebook posts?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Dr. Smith?
Can I, I'd like to point out a couple of things before the board considers adoption of these, if that's okay. Notice in academic growth numbers two, three, and four, those are required board goals. Those are your House Bill III goals, and I want to point that out, that that's how we cover these, we'll continually monitor these as well. But that academic performance piece in academic growth, those are, we have to account for them somewhere, and so that's where those three things are. The second thing I want to point out is there's some really big work here, and I go back to the word "transformational," and Trustee Mike made some comments earlier about we're at a time right now for some transformation, and I believe that. I think it's a time to continue to evolve as a system. Some of these things on here, I know, are outside maybe your comfort zone, and I point to the curriculum management audit. While that looks like a checkmark to say we did it or didn't do it, this is a really big deal for a system because it uncovers every part of the organization, and this is not a glows and grows audit. We will get no positive feedback on this audit. In fact, it's a deficit audit, so it will say all of the areas of deficiency that they see in the system. And it hurts, there's some pain points in that, and these are big work that we have to come out of that with. But if we go into this and say, "Check, we did a curriculum management audit," and then we don't use those results over the course of the next few years to better our system, then it's been a failed opportunity. So these are, it's an initial effort for transformation of our system, but we also have to hold ourselves accountable to continuing that work in future years. The same can be said about the last one under resources where it talks about it, "Campus Needs Index Using Key Metrics For Strategic Staffing And Resource Allocation." I have heard since I have been here the need to differentiate resources for our campuses across the district. That is entirely true. It is also very challenging work for us to undertake as a team of eight, because when a system gets in place, and we're faced with this in the springtime, and we can't say yes to everything for every campus, and there are differentiated needs by campus and by campus need, so staffing might look a little different at a higher-needs campus, and/or resources might look a little different at a higher-needs campus. I just want to make sure our board goes into this realizing these are transformational things that we're starting to engage in, and it's going to be hard work from this dais as well, because we will get feedback on that, there's no doubt in my mind. Is it the right thing for us to explore? I believe so, but I think that it is a shift in a system, and it's a large shift, and we have to be prepared for this. So I just wanted to make sure we pointed out a couple of these things before we go into it, that this is big transformational work in some ways, and while it looks like we can just say, "Yes, we did that," it's going to change practice and it's going to change systems, and that's going to be, there will be pain points along the way with those things, and I need, wanted to make sure you knew that before we go in.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Ms. Richardson.
I have two questions for you. One would be on culture, and point number two, increase our employee retention satisfaction index score from 3.9 to 4.0 by June 2025. That doesn't sound very high. Is that, on what scale are we using? Is that out of a 10-point scale?
It's a five-point scale. And so actually, for the size of our system, you know, to grow a tenth of a point is pretty considerable, and so we would be very excited to see that growth.
Thank you for clarifying.
And that's the metric that Dr. Lopez presented to you last week on that little scale, it looked like a rainbow in where we were, so it is a big shift.
Let me also say, I knew that answer, but I'm asking for people who maybe didn't see last time, because that just sounds really low if all you're hearing is that little snippet. The other thing I want to talk about is marketing and engagement. These two points. One, when President Chapa was talking about, you know, how many posts is going to be, how many we're going to average, 10 positive media mentions. I feel like we do a lot of positive mentioning. When, for myself personally, when we were addressing this originally, this is not really what I meant by marketing engagement. For me, this misses the mark of what we had discussed as board members. I would love to know what the other, the metrics, the other metrics could have been that were considered. For me personally, it just, it completely misses the mark of what marketing engagement, what I was hoping to see on here. I wished for something different, and I'm wondering if maybe in our one-on-ones, if we did not get proper feedback for what we were hoping for this. For me, it honestly could be taken away now. Like that's how, where before, I was an advocate that I wanted to see this on here, I wanted us to do something different, and now with this, I think our media department does a great job of doing positive media mentions. They are always touting the success of our students, programs, all the different involvements. They do a wonderful job of that. So I don't even know if, I wouldn't even have that as a point on here.
I think that's the challenge we have with this, and that I tried to communicate with marketing being included in some of this. And I think when we presented this last time, and I apologize if we swung and we missed, but I'm pretty sure I heard from the dais that we hit the mark on that last time, when we presented these at the October 3rd meeting. So that's why it's presented to you tonight, is the initial feedback that we heard from the dais last time, I thought was on track. I think that there, it is a challenging one for us to actually do, because marketing means different things to different people. And just being very blunt about this, I don't know sometimes if we're confusing marketing with the positive story or narrative in the community. And sometimes I think we say, "Well, if we could just get this on Facebook, we would have more people enrolled." Well, I think there's been a lot of work that's been done over the course of a number of years on that. And so then what, then the question is begged, what is marketing then at that point? If we, if we're doing those things, and we see the return already in our system on what our marketing efforts have been, and this isn't hitting the mark, then I think we need guidance from the board on what you mean by marketing, because I think this hits the target that was initially communicated to me as a superintendent.
Ms. Richardson, do you still have comment?
Not, not yet.
All right, we'll move on to Mr. Will Banks and then Ms. McMurro.
So dovetailing on what Ms. Richardson said is, this also misses the mark to me because marketing is a comprehensive marketing plan. This is a PR plan that just says, "We're going to do these two things in PR." PR is just one channel of marketing, of a comprehensive marketing plan. We, I think on the board, were saying, "We need a comprehensive marketing plan." When we see how well-branded districts around us are, to the east, to the south, to the north, I'll even give our district to the west kudos, because Fort Worth is known as where the West begins. Fort Worth's motto is "Where the Best Begins," which I think is brilliant. Again, it doesn't come down to a slogan, it's a comprehensive marketing plan. This is a PR plan. We do a great job on PR. We need someone to think broader and bigger, and I think that's the wish, I don't want to speak for my board members, but I'll let them chime in.
And I think if that's the will of the board, we'd be glad to change that. And this KPM one would be to develop a comprehensive marketing plan, and we'll use April 2025 as the target date as well. But again, the work then is about developing the plan, and I need to be clear about that. That's the work that's going to be happening over the years, developing that comprehensive marketing plan, and we will probably do that in conjunction with you all so we can gain some input from you, if that works.
All right, Ms. McMurro.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. Sorry, I know I already spoke, but Trustee Richardson and Trustee Will Banks, you guys made really good points, and I had to scramble to pull up the October 3rd longer list of potential KPMs. And I do remember, so this is something for our consideration, given the problem we have in front of us. One KPM that didn't make the cut that we could consider elevating or even replacing under marketing is, well, there's two I wanted to kind of bring up that were on the first presentation. Complete a three-to-five-year strategic planning process by April 15th, 2025. That includes multiple sources of feedback from students, staff, and families, and then conduct an external, I'm sorry, yes, that was another one, conduct an external enrollment review, because we discussed how we see our enrollment declining, and we want to figure out where those students are going. And then finally, or actually, the final two are the ones that made the cut. The final one, oh, here it is, design multiple marketing campaigns to increase awareness and engagement with Arlington ISD, including over 10 million impressions and 30,000 clicks by May 2025. So that might be one that better hits the mark. I agree with what you guys are saying, and Dr. Smith made a really good point. Everyone has a different definition of marketing, but I think that's why this discussion is worth our time, so we can calibrate around what's important, because it does have, it does have a lot of room for interpretation. I liked the KPM about designing multiple marketing campaigns because we need to reach this generation of parents, and we need to educate our community around the programs and opportunities we have in AISD. We talked last time about how a lot of our kids leave and they come right back, and it's not because parents just love to cause gaps in their children's education, or they really just wanted to try something out and then go through all the trouble of changing schools yet again. A lot of times, it's a lack of awareness around what the avenues are, spanning from, you know, the fact that we have intra-transfers and, you know, universal pre-K at every traditional elementary school, all the way up to our CTE offerings. So I do, I do, you know, want to elevate that. We can consider the KPM of designing multiple marketing campaigns. I just want to throw that out there.
I'll just tell you, I was the one that said no to that, and I did that intentionally because I believe we already do that. And I think that we already have multiple marketing campaigns going on in our system, and so I would support wholeheartedly us looking at a comprehensive marketing plan, because I think that could help us get on the same page about some of these things. But I think we have multiple marketing strategies that are already employed in our school district, and I don't necessarily know, and I think they've been presented to some of you, I don't necessarily know that continuing to do those is still going to hit your mark. I think investing the time over the course of the year in developing a plan so that we're all on the same page in future years would probably make the most sense. So that's the reason that one went away. The other one, strategic plan, in the enrollment piece, the strategic plan we're continuing to pursue, that's just not one that we felt elevated to the most important work, that's a piece of the puzzle. And then the second one was the enrollment review, we're planning to continue the enrollment review as well. That's about the enrollment process, though, not necessarily saying that we're looking at every student who's left our system.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I understand Mr. Will Banks and Ms. Richardson both still want to discuss marketing, and so I will do something a bit different and turn both their mics on.
I just want to say real quick, Dr. Smith, I agree. We are doing a lot of things, we're doing a lot of marketing campaigns, doing social media. What we're missing is that comprehensive strategy that supports these other priorities in our goals and objectives as a district, and the challenges we now face that Ms. McMurro so eloquently pointed out, especially around enrollment. So I would, I know there are a lot of great firms that can help us come in and think more strategically, and how we put all these great pieces and all this great talent so that everyone's rowing in the same direction.
When we did our board workshop earlier tonight, it was really nice, but I got to sit with Ms. Foster at my table, and so to hear when we were talking about the priorities, and one of the questions I asked her was, you know, "We see marketing engagement, how do you feel about that? What does?" And she said, "I'm all for it, I just want to know what do y'all want?" And I said, "I can't wait to find out, I can't wait to see when we get to give that opinion," and then here we are, right now. So I appreciate that we have a marketing team with Anita, with Spitz, with Anthony, with Kendall, with all these people behind the scenes that want to make something happen. We just need to be specific, and I think tonight, I hated Dr. Collins to tell you this is not what we wanted, but I did feel like after we were so passionate on the dais last time and really came to having this as one of our priorities, we can't just let it go by and not be specific to what we want. I do think having that overarching plan is what we need right now, we need a different direction is what we would like. You talked about the other districts around us, and you're right, there's some really good marketing themes out there. But I want to make sure that we could change this. I don't think it needs to be what you said, Vice President McMurro. With the last one you read, I understand why we wouldn't want to do that one, and why you would take that off the table, but I would like to see it, I think it was the second one you read, maybe? Dr. Smith, what was the one that said to create a three-to-five-year?
Strategic plan.
No, okay, what?
Conduct an external enrollment review to learn more about why Arlington-area families choose school options beyond Arlington ISD.
Utilize a diversified media strategy, decrease awareness of people. No. What is the one that you said, how did you put it? We talked about it a second ago, that it would be the, that we would have it developed by March 2025.
I think I said April, but...
Develop a comprehensive marketing plan.
Is that the one we are?
Yeah.
Okay, say it in its entirety, because that's the one I would like to adopt and put in as our point number one.
Yeah, and my proposal then, again, we can do that, I think, is replacing under marketing and engagement one, we would replace that with develop a comprehensive marketing plan, and we can add other flowery language, but we could put by April 2025.
And is this something that we could kick off by convocation next year?
I think there's a couple of key pieces in that. When you're talking specifically about, when you talk about things like slogans and stuff, I think your strategic plan has to be involved in that. When you talk about the district we want to become, that's what a strategic plan helps us define and the path to get there. And I think, I would hate to say with kickoff by next year, because it depends on the progress of strategic planning as well. And I am a little concerned at timelines on the strategic plan, just based on where we are right now in developing these priorities and KPMs as a district. I would be far more comfortable with saying that we have the marketing plan in place and realizing that we're ready to engage over the next year in what that is, but I think kicking, putting something in there to kick it off by convocation of next year, I don't know that that is, I'm not as comfortable with that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Mr. Will Banks, we'll go to Mr. Mike.
When I look at this marketing engagement, I focus on the first portion, the utilize a diversified media strategy. And so to me, when I read that, we're using multiple points within the strategy. When I was really pressing for marketing, it was to control the narrative. Arlington ISD is the best route to control that narrative. Dr. Smith brought up certain actions that we're going to take where they're going to be pain points. Arlington ISD is the best organization to control that narrative for those pain points. So when I talk about marketing, it is that, not just the positive, but those pain points. We control the narrative, we put it out there, because once you control the narrative, it is very hard for other organizations or other people to take that narrative from you, because you put it out there first. The number one, to me, it matches with what I wanted to see. I mean, we're talking about diversified media strategy, and then it says, "Including the positive things." So maybe it's just the lawyer in me looking at particular words, but no, overall, it's, that's the way I feel about this subject.
And I appreciate that, because I think you can just see by comments at the dais tonight why marketing is a tough one for us to wrestle with, because I do think many of you have very different opinions about that. And just hearing this, you know, again, we're going to still continue to communicate and market like we have, but just hearing this, the comprehensive marketing plan might be the best way for us to go to ensure that we're all on the same page with what we really want to accomplish.
Okay, further comments or questions? All right, Mr. Will Banks, I'm going to cue your mic up for just a second. Can you, you asked for two changes, one of which others discussed, which is changing number one under marketing to comprehensive marketing. number one, under marketing to comprehensive marketing strategy, comprehensive marketing plan by April 2025. You mentioned one that you would like to include before that, and I did not catch that. Can you repeat it?
Under marketing?
Safety and discipline.
I think it was under safety.
Oh, yeah, under safety, yeah, wanted to have a survey, KPI from the survey on behavioral issues in the classroom and see an improvement in that as well as safety and how safe our students and teachers feel in the classroom.
And so just for a clarifying question, if we, if we asked a couple of questions directly targeted at that this year to develop baseline data, would that hit that mark for you so that we had some baseline data to build off of for you?
I think we already have that baseline data.
Okay, so as long as it.
It's just using that survey to inform, are we improving in that area or not?
As long as we have a couple of those things in there to use that data and build off of that for the upcoming year.
Yep.
I think we can do that.
Okay, so you're not actually asking for a new KPM based on surveys?
It is a KPM. I would like to put a KPM based on the existing survey on one or two of those questions that we already asked, that we already have a baseline on.
Okay.
To see improvement, like, like in phrased in a way, number two under culture.
Okay.
So I don't have.
And as long as you're comfortable with us helping to look at that baseline data mark and setting the target, we can absolutely include that in there. The way I see that is that's a number two under safety and discipline that we would just, we would say increase our feedback on safety and discipline as measured by X questions, by whatever that target percentage is, and that way we have something to measure it by.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no further requests to speak, I will throw out there, based on the discussion that I had, and ask for a motion to approve the KPMs as presented, modifying it to add a new KPM under safety and discipline to incorporate survey improvement and then to replace KPM number one under marketing with develop a comprehensive marketing plan by April 2025. Do I have someone who is willing to make a motion to that end?
Still move.
I have Mr. Wilbanks making the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I have a second from Ms. Fowler. Okay, we'll move on to vote on the KPMs as presented and as modified. All trustees voting in the affirmative, the action item carries.
Trustees, I just want to thank you. I know this has been hard work getting to this point over the last few meetings and we appreciate it. This helps give us the direction as an administrative team and to focus our efforts on resourcing and focus over the year. So thank you. Appreciate the hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Collins. We'll move on to our second action item tonight, which is action item B, 2024-2025 Campus Improvement Performance Objectives. Dr. Smith?
I'm honored to present Dr. Lopez and Ms. Shelley Austin tonight to come present to you all on our SIP objectives and the work that's been going on to get here.
President Chapa, members of the board and Dr. Smith, thank you for the time this evening. Shelley and I will be presenting on the 2425 Campus Improvement Performance Objectives. So the purpose of this presentation is to provide an update on the 2425 Campus Improvement Plan process for y'all to review and then consideration of the campus performance objectives that y'all received in an Excel file disaggregated by campus and by topic last week. But we won't be referencing the data in this particular presentation. So just a reminder, our vision in AISD is that 100% of our students will graduate exceptionally prepared for college career and citizenship. And that vision undergirds the development of many of our processes and systems. There's alignment between the strategic plan, the district improvement plan and our campus improvement plans with student achievement, performance, growth, safety and the, and the vision for students to achieve what they're, what they're wanting to achieve in college career and citizenship is the foundation. So our strategic plan's broader, five-year plan, the district improvement plan is more granular, specific, and it's on a one-year cycle. And then we have 75 disaggregated campus improvement plans that are also on an annual cycle. And there's alignment between all of those things. And the purpose of the district improvement plan and the campus improvement plan specifically is to guide the campus and district staff in the systematic improvement of student performance for all student groups to attain the state's standards with respect to achievement indicators. So with that belief, with our system alignment, we have created the performance objective data disaggregation so that we stay in alignment from our district's improvement plan to our campus improvement plans. So each performance objective topic is based on one model comprised of our prior year or usually prior year, perhaps two-year lag on our historical student data. And so that the district performance objectives can be disaggregated to campus, to student group, and even to grade level. Each campus then has a proportionate responsibility tied to their student performance. So the success of the district really depends on the campuses accomplishing their performance objective goals. If every, if half of our campuses achieved exactly the performance objective that we gave them, but only half did exactly what we asked them to do, the district would not meet their performance objectives because the model is from, it's all based on the same set of student data. So, so the specific numerical values are given to campuses for their campus improvement plan performance objectives, but that's the only piece that, that the district gives to them. Campus leaders and then the Office of School Leadership, they handle the prioritization, campus level root cause analyses, and then strategy development. That's all up to the principals. So they have the clear goals that might be given to them, but the autonomy on how to achieve those goals. And so Ms. Austin's going to come up and talk about the rest of that process.
Good evening, President Chapa, board members and Dr. Smith. I'm really excited to get to share how this process works through the Office of School Leadership and how we align our campuses and how they've been guided and supported by us through this entire process, ensuring a strong unified approach across the district. First, the Office of School Leadership provides training for our administrators focusing on alignment and development of how they can create a campus improvement plan and how the district improvement plan is created. And this foundational training emphasizes the importance of consistence, consistency and coherence in our improvement efforts to ensure campuses are driving towards our broader goals as a district. Additionally, our principals and their instructional leadership teams conduct comprehensive need assessments. These assessments paired with a root cause analysis process that we've trained them in and modeled for them in various principals' meetings are instrumental in their ability to identify and identify the strategies that they need to create to meet their high priority goals and performance objectives. This process has really allowed campuses to focus on addressing their unique challenges and remain aligned with the district ride objectives. Additionally, campuses include their site-based decision-making committees, and that's pretty much a critical role whenever they're creating a CIP. They collaboratively and closely work with the leadership team and refine, further refine and further develop their plans, ensuring that the campus and the community input is included and that the plan's not only data-driven, but it also reflects the campus needs and the perspectives of everybody throughout that campus and the community. Additionally, executive directors, like myself, review those improvement plans. During this stage, we provide detailed feedback to help campuses fine-tune their strategies and their objectives. Once these plans are refined, of course, those CIP performance objectives are presented to you for approval, allowing us to show how we've thoughtfully planned this out and data-informed in the planning that we're creating as we go through this process. And finally, once all the feedback is integrated, those improvement plans are finalized, putting us on the path towards targeted strategic improvement at each of our schools. So once we do that, I think it's important that we tell you what happens throughout the year. Once the, sorry, once the campus improvement plans have been approved, what do we do as we go on throughout the year? And as we go throughout the year, we have a structured review process that takes place at each campus as they have a quarterly update. And this is where they review their process measures that they have tied to their identified strategies at their campuses. During these quarterly updates, campus leadership teams assess their effectiveness of the actions that they've implemented. It's not just a formality, but it's a crucial checkpoint to ensure that they are on track to meet those performance objectives. Specifically, campus teams evaluate whether process measures show progress or if adjustments are needed. This review leads to several of the decisions that you see here on the screen. Could be that they discontinue a strategy because it may not be yielding the expected results that they're looking for. Could be continuing a strategy that is demonstrating steady progress, modifying a strategy to better align with student or staff needs, or marking a strategy as accomplished because the desired outcome has already been achieved. This reflective process that they go through helps campuses remain agile and responsive to the real-time data and their performance outcomes. As they keep a close eye on these process measures, campuses are not only guided by their initial plans, but are also empowered to make necessary adjustments that keep them aligned with their goals and the district's overarching priorities. This regular cycle of reflection and refinement ensures that campus improvement plans remain living documents that evolve to meet the needs of students and staff throughout the year. So as we close this, we are recommending that you all approve the campus performance objectives for the 2425 school year. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Austin. Trustees, comments or questions? All right, seeing none, is there a motion? Have a motion from Mr. Mike to approve the campus improvement performance objectives. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a second from Ms. McMurro. Trustees will proceed to vote. All trustees voting in the affirmative, the motion carries, the 2024-25 Campus Improvement Performance Objectives are approved. Thank you, Dr. Lopez and Ms. Austin. All right, we'll move on now to the consent agenda portion of our evening. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda? Seeing no requests to withdraw items from the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Have a motion from Ms. Richardson. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Have a second from Ms. Fowler. We'll proceed to vote on consent. All trustees voting the affirmative, consent unanimously carries. We'll now come to the portion of our evening for open forum for non-agenda items. Ms. Crossno, do we have any speakers registered for non-agenda forum?
President Chapa, we do.
All right. I see that we have a number of speakers tonight and we'll start with Mr. Sutton here to speak about Symphony Arlington. Mr. Sutton, I know that you're very familiar with open forum.
So.
But I will go ahead and just read our, our baseline rules here. Not an opportunity to address trustees directly and expect a response. It's not a debate. We won't reply to speakers. Derogatory comments are not appropriate, will not be tolerated. You'll have three minutes to speak and Ms. Crossno will notify you when your time is up with the lights in front of you.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is Marvin Sutton. Thank you, board members for serving. I know it's a part of your life to give up, to never get back, but it's a worthy cause. So my topic was initially Symphony Arlington, but before I get into Symphony Arlington, I want to end with Symphony Arlington as a positive note. I'm a 32-year resident. I served on Arlington City Council 2019 to 2021. And the role of government is public safety. That's the number one role of government, no matter what level of government, it's public safety. So I want to get to public safety real quick, but I want to bring your attention to three dates and I'm going to talk about those dates and some things that I want to be part of the solution of, I've talked to superintendent, I've talked to other superintendents in the area. So let's just talk about dates here. March 2023, October 24, 2019, October 6, 2021, and April 24, 2024. Does those dates ring a bell to any trustee? And if it doesn't, I just want to bring it to your attention, we had on at least three of those dates, a shooting where a person died. Two of them occurred at Arlington High Schools. Matter of fact, when I served a city council member, I had a seven-year-old, 17-year-old killed off the campus. And then almost a year later, we have an incident that occurred in May, right before school ended. And we always seem to bring in resources after the fact. And so I met with some of the lawmakers that represents the city of Arlington. Matter of fact, my state senator, Senator Bertwell, is willing to produce a bill and I've talked to the superintendent about the bill. So what the bill entails is basically course instruction that deal with de-escalation, conflict resolution instructions. Why is that so important? We go through life, we never learn how to deal with conflict. We don't know how to deal with conflict. And when a student engages another student and kills a student based on a conflict, we're not talking mental health, we're talking conflict. So let's talk about that. So April 24, a student shot another student, conflict-related. October 6, at Timmerview, a student shot another student, brought a gun back to the classroom, didn't injure anybody. He injured, but didn't kill anybody. October 24, 2019, while I was on duty as a city council member, I had a 17-year-old killed off the campus. And then we get to 2023 at Delmar High School. The suspect are doing prison time now. So we lost that productivity. We lost future doctors and lawyers and school board members. So I'm asking for your help. I'm pushing for a bill that's going to go through committee and hopefully my state senator will get the bill crafted for us. So I want to give students a fighting chance at some pause when it comes to conflict. My overall goal is to reduce, okay. So on a positive note, I want to invite you to Symphony Arlington. I'm the president of Symphony Arlington. So when you need to decompress after a long day at the office, a long day on the board meeting, I have complimentary tickets for each and every one of you. We've been around since 20, or been around since 2000. It's a great way to become part of the Arlington fabric. It's downtown Arlington, so you get to engage with the heart of Arlington at Arlington Music Hall. Be coming up, our opening day is this Thursday, we'll have our first concert, so I'd love for you to come out. I'm going to leave your brochure with you, if that's okay. My name is Marvin Sutton and I want to be part of the solution.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. If you have anything to hand out, you can hand it to Dr. Hill. All right, our next speaker is Jennifer DeGraff. Is Jennifer here?
I think she left.
Not seeing Jennifer, we'll move on to Chad Gundry. Is Mr. Gundry here? Not seeing Mr. Gundry, we'll move on to Mr. Applewhite, who has indicated he'll appear virtually. Do we have him online?
President Chapa, we do not have him in the waiting room.
Okay, not seeing Mr. Applewhite in the meeting room, we will close non-agenda forum and move on to the superintendent's report.
Trustees, it's my honor to present to you a superintendent's report this meeting. I think we've skipped a couple in the past and I'll make this very brief, but there are a couple of highlights I wanted to make sure we hit. First, you're going to start to see a change in some of my superintendent reports, starting with tonight, and that is to start to focus in on our priorities that you adopted. And tonight, we're going to hone in on that academic growth priority. Spence is clicking, so if anything goes wrong with the clicking, please talk to Spence about that. I wanted to give applause to Sheridan Elementary School, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about Sheridan. I've been to Sheridan now three times since I've been in the school district and I've seen tremendous growth in my three times that I have been there. Karen Hicks, the principal, is an amazing principal and she is supported by an amazing staff at Sheridan Elementary. And here are the things that I know is their growth academically, if ratings were published, would have pushed them significantly higher in TEA's rating systems. And that's due to the hard work of our educators there at the school. And some may ask, what are they actually doing? Well, I was in an ELA classroom the other day that was taught by a masterful teacher in that classroom. She was able to have 25 fifth graders eating out of the palm of their hand, out of her hand, engaged in literary discussion in that classroom. They can do great work at Sheridan Elementary School, given the right teaching and efforts that are going on, and I'm so thankful for the work that's happening there. Another opportunity that you see at Sheridan, and this is one of those where I had to ask some questions, is I walked by a class that was actually visiting the restroom and they're often at the elementary school, students are seated outside of a restroom while they're taking turns doing, quote, bathroom breaks at the elementary level. Do you know what they were doing at Sheridan? Is they were actually using that as an opportunity to continue their learning. And so students were engaged in classroom activities while they were taking their, their bathroom break at the, in that. that particular moment. And talking to Karen a little bit about that, it's about maximizing time because they believe in the students at Sheridan, and they believe that they can achieve great things if given great opportunities. And so I just wanted to highlight that notion of academic growth. We've seen results at Sheridan based on STAR testing data. We see results in the behaviors in the school, and we see results in the actions of the teachers, and I couldn't be more proud of or more thankful for Karen and the work of her staff for the students at Sheridan. We're going to see great things out of that school, and we're going to, we need to continue to applaud them for their efforts. I also want to thank all of our principals for doing outstanding job of leading our campuses. As you know, October is National Principals Month, and the district has 76 leaders on campuses who guide students and staff every day, providing excellent learning opportunities and putting students first. The job of a principal is extremely complex. You are the instructional leader, you are the community engager, you are the counselor sometimes based on the current situation, you are also the operational manager of that building, you have a staff that reports to you, and their work is extremely complex because they deal with problems that are hard to solve. And so I'm extremely grateful for all of the amazing principals that we have in Arlington ISD, and the ones that we highlighted this month are just a sample of them. We didn't get to highlight all 76 of them during the month, but they're doing great work on our campuses, and I'm grateful for their leadership. There continues to be tons of progress at the construction site that is Joey Rodriguez's Junior High School. You all got to see that firsthand, and we reached a milestone and celebrated with the topping-out ceremony recently. More than 100 construction workers are on that site daily, and that number will grow to more than 200 soon as the work continues to remain on schedule. It is pretty phenomenal what you've seen there in such a short amount of time. Finally, today marks the final day of Hispanic Heritage Month, and it's been great to see our district honor the month in so many ways. We got to kick off things at Wimbis, as you remember, about a month ago. Congratulations to the students and art teachers at Workman Junior High School for their outstanding collaboration on their art project. Also, it's important to note, we should celebrate Spear Elementary Assistant Principal Albert Becerra and his wife, Beatrice, the secretary at Key Elementary. They are part of a mariachi group that performs at every Dallas Cowboys home game. We're grateful for all of the efforts that our schools and our district have engaged in for Hispanic Heritage Month. This concludes my superintendent's report this morning.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Do we have trustees with reports this evening? Have a couple. Mr. Mike?
Oh, I'm first. All right. So just a few things. I had the opportunity to go visit some schools during these past few weeks. The first one I took a tour of was the Turning Point Secondary School, where I met with Principal Muldrew and AP Crystal Lyons. I will tell you that they are dealing with some students who have some of the most severe behavior issues, and speaking with the principals, these are children who have some of the more severe needs. The good things that I saw there was the approach that they are taking with the students. I had the opportunity to speak not only with the principals, but she introduced me to the entire staff, and the way that they not only instill discipline, but their approach to getting down to the root cause of the behavior issues to help try to change some of those behaviors was nonetheless short, I mean, it was just amazing. There are children there who, at their home campuses, may not have been scoring well on their assignments, but when they get there and they have people who are focused on those behavioral needs, these kids are scoring higher. So they're doing wonderful work there. It is different from what you anticipate when you think of Turning Point, but when you go there and see and talk to not only the staff, and I had the opportunity to talk to several students there, you would not have known that there were any issues. So it was a needed program, and they're doing wonderful work there. The second place that I took a tour of was Dan Diabert Career and Technical Center. What can I say? Principal Polster showed me around, and you hear it, you see the benefits of the children who are taking those programs, but to see it in operation is something totally different. This, it didn't give me the impression of a school, a high school, right? It was more like a college campus, and, you know, just everywhere I went, even walking into the area where they're doing the food services, it literally was like a restaurant. I mean, you had on one side kids participating and cooking meals, and on the other side, you had them actively studying. It was just amazing program, so much so, you know, she said that they're running out of room because, I mean, kids are wanting to participate and be active in it. And I encourage any constituents who are watching this to go, go look at it, go see what's provided, because it's amazing what we're doing here. And then to wrap it up today, I had the opportunity to visit Key Elementary with Ms. Brown and read to the, a group of, [laughter] read to about a three-classroom full of 2nd graders, Ricky the Rock that Couldn't Roll. It was an enjoyable time. I showed up in my Roach costume and-
I'm sorry, in your what?
In my Roach costume.
So make sure you all heard.
And I will tell you, I severely underestimated the effect it would have on 2nd graders. I don't think they were particularly interested in Ricky the Rock, and they were waiting until the end of the book so that they can try on the costume. So the costume is still at Key Elementary so that the rest of the 2nd graders can try it on.
So we're little boys.
By far, there are pictures. I didn't submit them in time, but out of all of my trips, that was one of the most enjoyable was with a group of 2nd graders.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Ms. Haynes?
Yes, so mine is just a quick plug for Mr. Grimaldo's cult construction class at Arlington High School. They are hosting a fundraiser this year that will be open to the public for the first time ever. So this Thursday, October 17, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., for only $5, you can enjoy spooky season by going through their haunted courtyard that these students have constructed completely by themselves, and they are going to execute the haunted courtyard by themselves. They'll be dressed up, age-appropriate spooks happening. So if you're free that evening, please come out and support them. This is their big fundraiser for the year, and they're looking forward to having, hopefully, a good turnout, so.
What's the-
Is what I was told. Supplies.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Ms. Haynes. I just wanted to say that I have really, Dr. Smith mentioned in his report, really enjoyed seeing our district celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month over the last month, from the dancers from Thornton in our last meeting to starting it off at Wimbis Elementary with their annual program. We are a district that's almost a majority Hispanic Heritage District at this point, and it's just great to see how this district has embraced that culture and celebrates it in our students. Ms. Secretary, do we have any items to consider this evening?
We do. We have four items. Trustee Richardson, myself, asked Talisa Brown to send a board invitation to some of the drug classes and talks that they do, and she said she would get that out to us and add to our board calendar. President Chapa requested staffing cost for the IV-only program to be sent to the board. Trustee Will Banks would like, under our priorities, baseline data mark measured by survey questions and KPMs, and to replace point number one under marketing engagement to develop a comprehensive marketing plan by April 15, 2025, and that's it.
All right, thank you, Ms. Richardson. It is 10:26, and this meeting is adjourned.